Good morning. I'd like to call the August 2nd Sterns County Board of Commissioners meeting to order. Roll call would indicate that all commissioners are present. Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, our nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Freedom.
All right. So our next item is approval of the agenda. And if you'll notice in your blue folder, there is a consent item C1, which replaces the C1 that was on the consent, which was the June 28th approval of minutes. Should have been the July 19th. And then also in the consent is C13. That's a one-day temporary on-sale liquor license for St. James of Jacobs Prairie Church for their event on August 6th. So that's another addition to the consent. Other than that, that's all that I would have for the total agenda.
Move approval of the agenda.
Thank you, Commissioner Clark. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Persky. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Next item is our public access forum. Anyone wishing to address the board on issues not found on today's agenda may do so at this time, either in person or virtually. I know we're having problems with our WebEx right now. The individual comments are limited to three to four minutes, and county board members will not engage in dialogue with speakers, but rather refer the matter to appropriate county department. A citizen may speak at the public access forum only once a month. So if there's anybody here wishing to speak at the public access forum on anything not on our agenda today, please step up to the microphone, state your name and address. You have three or four minutes.
Good morning, Sandy Clocker. Again, thank you for having me here and thank you for listening. I'm here again on the election integrity. We say there will be safe, transparent, and secure elections. The election mantra is make it easier to vote. What I heard Friday was that it was a postcard that was mailed out to the folks. Sorry, that's my Sterns County. And they are to vote at two places, one at a local, one at a state. Why is there so much confusion on these elections? It's time to get back to the basics. You know where I stand on the machines. The Minnesota 206.56 talks about turning on the cast vote record. And the cast vote record, in case you are not familiar, is a tabulator that saves the ballot images. Statute 206.56 subdivision 6 states, "The automatic tabulating equipment must be programmed to provide a complete recapitulation of all ballots processed." I had a conversation with the staff. Laura Loudonbach did tell me, and Laura Loudonbach is the Division Director, License Center, and Elections. I asked her if the cast vote record was turned on. She said it is not currently used. So we have got a apparatus in the machines that is not even turned on to verify our election. You have in your hand, that I gave to you this morning, a resolution asking you to turn on the CRV, CVR, sorry. So please consider that resolution and pass that before the machines go out. The second information that we've been hearing about is that the ballots from the 2020 election are going to be destroyed. I don't want that evidence destroyed. I don't want any of the evidence destroyed. I did confirm with Randy Schreifels, and he did let me know that he was going to extend that date from September 3rd. However, I have not gotten the answer on how long we are going to extend that date. 1.3 million has spent in Sterns County for elections. I'm asking you to do your job, and see that this money is spent wisely, and tell me what it is being spent on. There's an evidence in other states. Wisconsin showed the illegal ballot boxes, El Paso County in Colorado, Maricopa County in Arizona, Orenoa County in New Mexico, and Trum County in Michigan. And Sterns County has five violations, five charged in voting violations in Sterns County. Now, this came out on January 3rd in 2022. So January of this year, it says five charged with voting violations in Sterns County. I want you to become knowledgeable on what's going on and abide by your mission statement. And your mission statement says this, "Provide exceptional service to assure a safe, healthy, vibrant county for all. Your values are professional, approachable, responsive, collaborative, fair and equitable." There is a statute 206.58, section 8, that we've discussed before, that gives you the authority. Gives you the authority in your local government. And why do we have local government if you do not govern locally? Why do we have an auditor if we don't have an audit? Let's have complete transparency. And if not, I question, is it because you're uninformed? Are you complicit? Or are you compromised? I'm asking many times for an evening open forum. I have not gotten an answer on that. So we did set up a date. I'm done, Steve, right now. Thursday, August 18, Sal's Bar in St. Joe at 6:30. Thursday, August 8, the Flyers are out. So please come so we can hear your concerns. Tyranny is not possible without compliance. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Sandy. Is there anyone else here wishing to speak on something not on today's agenda? Please state your name and address for the record. Thank you.
Hello. My name's Cynthia Fisher. I'm in Fairhaven Township, Sterns County. We deserve to have confidence in our voting process. It's impossible to do when we keep using machines that are one of the sources of the problem. We must quit using machines. We need to go to one ballot, one vote, in person, and have the ballots counted. We also need a better form of voter ID. With all the evidence out there from what went on with the 2020 election, the only reason you would ignore this is plausible deniability. You said we needed signatures, but you don't say how many. How many signatures do we need? We need to know. At events I go to, everyone's in agreement that there were problems with the ballots and the machines, and they signed this petition. We need you to hear the evidence, starting with listening to Eric Von Mecklen's presentation on the problems with the machines. He's even written a book about it. You should be reading it if you haven't already. After hearing a three-minute clip of the election judge training, I appalled at the fact there were discussions regarding possible power outages and other malfunctions, machines, with the machines that can occur during the processing. If we use paper ballots, those possibilities would be eliminated, and confidence in our votes being properly counted would be evident. Well over a year ago, I sent out an email to every legislator in Minnesota regarding the 2020 election. I requested that we do a full forensic audit after many lawsuits and other unlawful actions by people who had no business changing the rules with regard to elections were implemented. I received two thank yous, not from my local representatives, and one threat from a senator, from Egan, that I passed on to Sheriff Soika. After reading the email exchange, he commented, "The senator sounded like he was the one who had done something wrong." If our elections are so safe and fair, why would a concerned citizen get threatened by asking for an audit, especially when the person doing the threatening is directly involved in the election process? As county commissioners, it's your duty to make sure we, the people, have confidence in our elections. As a citizen, it's my duty to make sure that you follow through with your job. As I stand here today, I'm telling you, we do not have that confidence, and we need to work together to make the changes necessary to save our local community before we lose it all. Making the commitment that the state made these decisions, or the comment, I'm sorry, that the state made these decisions is no longer acceptable. You need to do more. And we need to work together. For good people to stand by and do nothing is criminal. I'm asking you to please help all of us and uphold the oath you took to our constitutional republic when you took office before we lose it to tyranny. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on the item not on our agenda? Anyone else? One more time. Seeing no one else, we will move on to our next item, which is approval of the consent agenda. There are a couple of notices that, or comments that should be made. Item number one, again, is changing the minutes from June 28th to the July 19th, which is in your blue folder. Consent item number two on here would need to be approved contingent on the township approval. Because it's coming up fairly quick, it's on our agenda, but the township would have to approve that. So we'd have to approve a contingent on the township agreeing. Otherwise, and then C13 was the St. James Parish request for an on-sale liquor license. Anyone have anything you want pulled or comments?
Mr. Chair, number 11.
Number 11? Do you want that pulled for?
Yeah, let's go ahead. Let's pass all the other ones, and then I'll bring it back.
Okay. Anybody else have anything? If not, we'd be looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda, pulling item number 11, and probably discussing it at Environmental Services.
Mr. Chair, I think it can be easily clarified right away.
Oh, okay. All right. So we'll pull that one out. Looking for approval of the rest of the consent agenda items. Thank you, Commissioner Lenzmeyer. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Mergan. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Consent item number 11. Shelley, do you want to?
Mr. Chair, Shelley Benton, Environmental Services Director. Item C11 is the request by Ben Stockinger for a conditional use permit for a contractor yard. And by pulling it, essentially, it means that the board is not concurring with the planning commission decision, and our typical practice is to hold a public hearing in the future. I think there were some items of information that were being looked for, township information related to the access, and then some additional information that Mr. Stockinger is now aware of. So we would just request that it comes back for its own public hearing in the future when we have all that information provided by the applicant. And then everyone would be re-noticed.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Hearing that.
Commissioner Lenzmeyer, I believe you attended that planning commission meeting last week or week before. Yeah, and I understand there were a considerable number of concerns by neighbors about, you know, the position of that business on that property. And I've received, and I'm sure many others have received, concerns about that property and what Mr. Stockinger's looking at, doing out there. So I think it would be in the best interest if we go ahead and just delay it and then have our own public hearing, allow Mr. Stockinger to address those issues that the public brought up, and then move it forward as we see if he can mitigate some of those things. And if he can't, then doesn't move forward.
So basically, we wouldn't concur with the planning commission and?
Right.
Opt to hold our own public hearing.
And you would set a public hearing at a date to be determined when all the information is provided.
Okay. Commissioner Lenzmeyer?
While it's marginally off-topic, transitional properties, which I would think this is one of those, are always challenging. I don't know a solution, a better solution to how we should be working with those. But without a doubt, I grew up on a transitional property. And I wish we'd give it some thought, although I don't have a suggestion and the appropriate direction on this. I'll just put it out there, and we'll have to consider that sometime soon.
Okay. Yeah, because I guess realistically, that property in that area could go residential.
But it isn't just the property in that area. Wherever, wherever properties that are located in townships, but they're in proximity to an urban or a municipal fringe, we're going to have issues like that, you know? We all, I can't remember what author it was, but he said you can't go home, meaning no matter if you stay in the same place, things change. We haven't done the best job of making that point. And what should we do about it? Not really sure, but I think it merits discussion.
Okay, so would somebody like to make the motion to not concur with planning commission and hold their own public hearing?
I could do that.
Thank you, Commissioner Lenzmeyer. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Persky. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thanks, Shelley. Okay, moving on. The next item is a public hearing. To consider a large gathering license for tech high school reunion, Shelley and Jane, I guess, will be discussing that, and then we'll open the public hearing.
Correct. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioners, as Chair Notch stated, I'm Mark Lateral with Environmental Services. I'm here to co-present item D1, beginning on packet page 191. This item is a request to the board to conduct a public hearing for consideration of issuance of a large gathering license for the tech high school reunion to be held at El Rancho Mañana Campground. With me this morning is Jane Knott. She is one of our senior environmental health specialists for the department. Jane is tasked with being part of the review committee, who processes the applications and makes the recommendation for this. So, Mr. Chair, I'll turn this over to Jane for her explanation.
Okay. Morning, Jane.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. As Mark said, my name is Jane Knott. I'm one of the environmental health specialists at Sterns County, and I serve on the large gathering panel, along with a representative from Sterns County Sheriff's Office, emergency management, our highway department, public health, and the auditor's office. Our panel met on June 27th, and to review the application that had been provided for the tech high school reunion. There were a few things that we needed additional information on to be considered a complete application that we were comfortable in recommending approval on. And that information was submitted to us, and the committee then, following that, did recommend approval for this large gathering event. So that's why we're here today. If you have any questions, you know, I'll do my best to answer those. And I know the applicant is here as well, so.
Okay. Otherwise, I'll open the, oh, go ahead, Mark. Did you have?
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to add that I did, we did receive two written comments. Do you want me to read them now?
Probably do it during the public hearing.
Okay.
And we'll do that for, I'll open a public hearing, then we can read those in.
Okay, thank you.
All right. With that, we'll open the public hearing for the large gathering permit.
Okay, Mr. Chair. As I stated, I received two, or the board actually, all received two emails regarding this item this morning. The text of both emails are the same, so I'll read it once. But the emails did come from Jeff Blum and Alice Lenzmeyer. So the email reads as follows, "Dear Commissioners, I wish to be on record being against the Sterns County giving El Rancho Mañana and Kevin Ward a large gathering permit for the upcoming tech high school reunion. I believe there is a large gathering permit request on your August 2nd agenda. As you may or may not know, El Rancho is out of compliance with their campground permit. There has been an ongoing investigation by Sterns County Environmental Department and the Sterns County Attorney's Office, Chad May, for a year now. The campground has issues that are out of compliance. Among them, but not limited to, septic systems that need to be replaced because they are allowing raw sewage to drain directly into the ground, potentially causing groundwater contamination, and consistently being over the number of campers allowed by the permit issued to the campground. There are various other infractions that the campground has been working on getting into compliance, as per the Sterns County Environmental Department. Recently, the campground had an event, the Wild West Show, that was not granted a permit to hold the event. In defiance, the event was held anyway with no regard to having a permit, or no regard for not having a permit. As a concerned citizen, I am voicing my concern, and respectfully ask that El Rancho not be given any more permits until the campground has proven that they are in compliance with the infractions that affect the health and welfare of the other people and the environment. Then signed sincerely, Jeff Blum." And then the other email, Alice Lenzmeyer.
Okay, thank you. Did you want to just address an update on, I think Jane kind of mentioned that you guys have been out there and are working on some compliance issues?
Mr. Chair, board members, I will state that the department has been working with El Rancho for some time now, on multiple compliance concerns. The department does have a compliance agreement in place. I don't feel that I'm at liberty at this point to convey the terms of that compliance agreement. Chad May from our attorney's office is here, so I would defer any questions regarding that compliance agreement to him.
Okay, thanks, Mark. Okay, with that, is there anyone here wishing to speak on the, at the public hearing for a large gathering permit? If so, please come up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
Kevin Ward, representing El Rancho Mañana. I'm a campground owner and operator. Been doing so for over 30 years. We're just trying to do a basically gathering for the tech reunion. We've done multiple gatherings, from the large group gatherings with the Bluegrass Festival for over 20 years. The Wild West Show has been out there. We are working with some compliance issues, definitely with the county. But I think that's any business. It's an operation. You're continually trying to upgrade systems and keep in compliance. I am working with both state and local on any of the permitting, the licensing, and the issues that are of hand. And I certainly can answer any of the questions that you'd ask as far as the permit. But it's just a reunion for my actual class. It's nothing huge, but I went through the process of the large group gathering to be in compliance with everything.
Okay. Any board members have questions for Kevin at all? No? Okay. Thanks, Kevin.
Okay.
Is there anyone else here wishing to speak on behalf of the large gathering permit request for El Rancho Mañana?
Hello, my name is Charles Ward, and I've been involved with this for some time, and I'm here on behalf of the county itself. And I think there's a lot of misinformation in information that isn't out there. The compliance agreement, as has been stated, hasn't been made public. I don't know why it isn't public. I don't know how anybody can know what is in compliance and what is being abided by the agreement or not, when nobody knows what it is. Kevin has been out of compliance since 2019. Every day that you go out there, there's campers parked outside of the parking zone. That is what I, my understanding is of what's in the agreement. That seems to be in direct defiance. I'm told by the environmental department that there's 120 campsites that he's allowed to have under this agreement. And he's had up to 190 campers in there this summer on a couple of different occasions. My bigger concerns in this are, is how do we do this in a way that's fair to the county, and the county doesn't wind up with views that seem to be one rule for one person and another rule for another people? You have a permit, the permit should be followed. You have an agreement, the agreement should be followed. This dates back to 2019, and what I hear from the environmental department is the biggest problem is, they have no means of enforcement. So it winds up over in the legal end of things with the county attorney. And there seems to be a conflict of interest with the county attorney being one of the people that is in the band, that is at the event at a place that is in noncompliance. That seems to be a conflict of interest. I don't, you know, have a desire to necessarily stop a fun event. I'm not against having events, but I'm for having rules in place that everybody has to follow. And if we just keep kicking the can down the road, another time, another time, there's never any change in the behavior. I know there's some five out of eight septic systems are in default or have problems there. Don't know to what extent, nobody can tell me. I'm told it's not intimate, but it's a problem. We've had ample shoreline improvements that haven't gone through the permitting process. I don't believe for this packet that you have assigned requests from the owners, which is part of the requirements according to paragraph 4.1.8 for large gathering. I don't see that notarized request from the landowners, nor was there any meeting of the landowners to provide that information for this large gathering. So with that all said, I'd just like to make sure that, you know, you're aware of the difficulties that are out there, that the county is having even forcing in compliance or managing that compliance. It's gone on for three years. So either something has to be done so that operations like this can be held accountable in a more systematic manner, or put something in place such as that, you know, give him the, for whatever is this time, but that he can't get permits and whatever until he's up to code, or can show that he can apply by it, and that should be for everybody, not just for this case. Or it has to come back to the commissioners here so that it's not at some bureaucratic level of whether you continue or you don't continue. That's all I have to say. Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on a large gathering permit? Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi there. I'm Rhonda Green. I'm at 27781 Jenny Court, Cole Spring. I live across the lake on Long Lake from El Rancho. And I have no And I have no, I have no problem with them having any events out there. I would just ask that they be limited to 10 o'clock at night. That's all I have to say.
Okay, thanks, Rhonda. Anyone else?
Hello, my name is Guy Vance, 7383 Haynes Way in Eden Prairie, Minnesota. Class of 1982. I'm organizing this event for tech high school. And what's a, a little bit shocking to me is that I bet I have probably 40 or 50 hours into this and have collected money from a bunch of people, people that are going to be traveling from all over the world for this event on August 20th. For me to just find out, just like a week ago, that we have these compliance issues with the business. And I, I'm just here to, to just say, I think it would really be a shame if we were not able to hold this event. And it just has me wondering, you know, how, how a business can stay, you know, in business, you know, while we have, you know, some of these issues. And, and it kind of, it kind of makes me feel like a victim right now. So that's all I have to say about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Morning.
Good morning. My name is Stephen Schwartz. I live at 2695 Seventh Avenue North in Sartell. I too am a 1982 tech grad. And Guy and I, like Guy is spearling this project up. And I, right now, we currently have 109 people. So I don't know why a large gathering permit is necessary. Because I guess it's supposed to go over the threshold of 99, 99 or 1,000 people. We're not expecting that. We're going to have 109 people. So I'd appreciate it if you guys would approve his permit.
Thank you. Sure.
I just want to state that some of the stuff that was stated earlier, I believe, is more of a family issue. Between me and my brother, this has been ongoing for years. I am certainly working with the county, I think the county board, or the, not the board, excuse me, but Environmental Services know that I've operated the campground for years. I've always tried to do above or beyond what is needed. Some of the septic issues that are being kind of expounded on, we're going through a process of water counting and sewage counting, so they cannot be replaced. There isn't affluent running about and going astray. It's in the process and in the guidelines of what they've asked me to do, to do this, surveys and the water calculations and all that. The events that have been going on there, I've always gone through the permit process. And there is changes that have happened throughout the years with the ordinances. And there's some things that are a work in process between government and the private sector. And certainly, I've always tried to follow those rules. And if I can answer any questions, I'm just trying to run a business, stay in business, and follow the rules. And try to add some enjoyment to people's lives.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
I am Chris Vance. I live in St. Joseph, Minnesota. I'm also an 82 graduate. I think El Rancho runs a pretty good show out there. Been out there for 50 years or so. We applied for a, you know, large gathering permit, knowing that we might not hit it. We had 550 people graduate, if everybody brought their spouse. We didn't know if we'd be there. It is a small venue. And I don't think that we'll have any issues or the permit should be denied. It's a very small venue that's going to be going on. And El Rancho is definitely capable of handling a small little group like that, so, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on the large gathering permit public hearing? If not, do we need any, any more information from Environmental Services or attorney? Otherwise, we can close the public hearing.
I don't believe the department has anything further to add, nor the attorney's office. So if you want to close the public hearing, I think that would be appropriate.
Kevin, did you have another comment before we close the public hearing?
I just wanted to state, as we've done in the past for any other permits and stuff, the fire department knows, we have medical there, we have a security service that's been hired. We paid the permit, we've gone through all the things within the application that's required, you know, for the large group gathering permit. And I have all those, and I think they've submitted all of them too, so. So we've gone through, I mean, people in the area that we work with are all notified.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'll call again for anybody else wishing to speak at this public hearing? Anyone else wishing to speak? Not seeing anyone, I'll close the public hearing. Board, comments, wishes? Mr. Persky?
Mr. Chair, yeah, Mark, I'm curious about the concerns that environmental has at the park. Will those issues be able to be mitigated perhaps by the end of the year?
The issues that are outlined in the compliance agreement?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Persky, Commissioner Persky?
Correct, the ones that are in the compliance agreement. But any, any issues that you have out, align out there within the park?
I, I would, I would like to say 100% yes, but I am not sure that I could state that. We are, we are, are working towards compliance, and we have specific dates and timeframe for issues in that compliance agreement that's been signed. It's, with the agreement, that if everything goes the way it needs to, there's potential to have a number of things wrapped up by the end of the year. But I can't, I don't have a crystal ball, so.
Commissioner Clark?
I'm sorry.
Okay, but, well, my concern would be, you know, if there are these outline issues, and, and it's been ongoing, that we do set a deadline that they be remedied. And then we look at the 2023 season and say, if you can't get these things in line, it doesn't open next year.
Right, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Persky. I think more what you're speaking to, if I'm hearing your concerns correctly, lie with the campground licensing.
Yep.
That the department does, the annual licensing versus the matter that we're here to speak of today with the large gathering license.
Correct.
I think those concerns, yes, there's, there's definite, if we can't get to a state of compliance with the campground, there's definitely things that could be discussed regarding the annual licensing for 2023.
And I would say as long as they have a compliance agreement that's addressing everything, you know, that's probably timestamped, you know, if they have an agreement, I believe on compliance, I think that's.
Okay. And, and Mr. Chair, being an Apollo, grab my condolences to the tech people in the room.
Commissioner Clark?
Our son is a 2006 grad. He will not be attending, but certainly appreciate what you all are attempting to do. I believe after talking with staff, I know the answer to this, but for the public, does the department have any concerns as it relates to this particular event, if we would approve this?
I don't believe the department has any concerns to this particular event. I believe the recommendation of the Large Gathering Committee is to approve the license to be issued to hold the event, so that would be the stance of the department.
So as it specifically relates to the septic situation?
No.
All right, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Mergan?
So what I'm hearing here is that we're dealing with two different issues here. This gathering versus, and the campground are two separate issues.
I believe, Commissioner, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Mergan, yes, I believe that is the case. We have two, two situations. We have a large gathering licensing request, and we have a campground compliance situation. They should be viewed separately.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Commissioner Lenzmeyer?
Did we check with the sheriff? Have we had any record of disturbance along that line? Mostly what we're considering here are environmental related issues. I'm just, I'm thinking along the line of people management. What's that been like? What's their record like in that situation? Are you aware of any issues out there?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Lenzmeyer, we do have a representative from the Stearns County Sheriff's Office that sits on the large gathering panel.
Yeah.
John Lenz. And one of the requirements that we did require was that Kevin hire additional security for this event, which he has done. And so the sheriff's office did not have any further concerns, knowing that there's going to be security for the event.
So Mr. Chair, given all that, I'll move approval.
Okay, we have a motion to move to approve the large gathering permit. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Persky. Further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Mr. Chair, I'm certainly glad to hear they're working on a compliance agreement and that, that the issue, the other issue will get resolved. That's really important.
Yeah, sounds good. Thank you for your time, everyone.
Have a good reunion.
And good luck with the reunion.
I hope the tech folks have a good reunion too.
Why is yours this year too? Okay, moving on, let's see. Our next item is another public hearing. This one is to consider ordinance number 640, mending land use and zoning ordinance number 439 for vacation home rentals. Angie, I believe you're going to open this up for us?
Good morning, Mr. Chair Commissioners, Angie Berg, Environmental Services. On your agenda today, next, is our consideration of ordinance changes to land use and zoning ordinance number 439 for vacation home rentals. There's been various previous actions made by the board, mostly directing the department and planning commission to have discussion, and then ultimately setting your public hearing for today. So the goal of today is to review the recommendations that were provided to the planning commission and the planning commission provided to you, conduct the public hearing. We have people online who would like to participate, and that is, we have a plan for that. And then obviously, we have people in the audience, and then we have written testimony that I will paraphrase those few items that I got in after the deadline. And then lastly, we'll ask the board to make some next steps, and decide what you want to, decide how you want to decide. So with that, Mr. Chair, I think our plan was to review the recommendations document. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so each commissioner will have on your table spot a spreadsheet. This is also in the packet, on packet page 231. I think the control one was going to try to get that displayed if, if they're able to. And then there's copies on the back table as well. So after lots of discussion internally and with the planning commission, the department worked on this document. And the intent of the document was to provide for the planning commission and the board to have options in terms of what we call levels of regulation. So you can decide if you're going to, are you going to choose the low, the medium, or the high category? So on the left-hand side are the process requirement, and then give options along the way. So the first is permit type. Currently, the interim use permit is the requirement for vacation home rentals. And the proposal that was presented to the planning commission that coincides with what some other counties statewide are doing is allow a provisional use for rentals up to a certain number of occupants. The department suggested 12. That's what some other counties are doing. The planning commission landed more on a number of six and, but ranged between four to eight. I'll just keep going through these, Mr. Chair, unless I'm stopped. Okay, the next is licensing. And as you know, the, the county is delegated by Department of Health to do licensing of lodging, hotels, motels, pools, et cetera. That is required by, for our delegation agreement, so we really don't have any choice there. That's just a mandate. Next is noise. As we all know, there's state noise standard that applies to any land use, which would also apply to people enjoying their property outside. The proposal that the planning commission looked at was specifying quiet hours on the permit or in the ordinance. Right now, that's done per application, when various permits are coming to the planning commission. And a lot of counties now are moving towards just specifying the quiet hours in the ordinance. So that's what the planning commission was recommending. And I would also state that also means they have to meet the state noise standard. So state noise standard is a given, no matter what hours would be specified in the ordinance. Next is the septic system. Currently, we require a 50 gallon per day per person. And the proposal is going to 75 gallons per day per person with a rolling certification, which basically means if somebody applies to do a vacation home rental, they need to certify their septic system, and they need to certify it every three years. So we would always have a compliant, a notice, a notice of compliance on that septic system.
I was going to say, Angie, you skipped the parking one, so.
Oh, I did, I'm sorry. I'll go back to that. Thank you. So, so with the septic, the way that works is when someone first calls and says, we would like to do a vacation home rental, we look at how big the septic is, and how big the drain field is, basically. And then that determines how many people could be on that system for a rental. Moving back up to parking, the proposal is to keep the designation of one space for each three people, and that's based on the permitted occupancy. Okay, so now we're on to drinking water. Again, this is something that's done at the time of the license application. And that is what the planning commission is recommending that we retain is water tests, and that's for nitrates and coliform.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Persky?
Angie, would that also relate to those that are municipal systems? You know, we have those that are in private walls, and we have those that are municipal. Would we require it if they're on municipal?
Mr. Chair, I don't believe we have any properties that are regulated under this ordinance that are on municipal water.
Okay.
But I, that's a good point. If there were, I, I don't think it would hurt to have that test done. But you're right, if they're covered by a municipal system, those are automatically already tested. So I'll think about that. Okay, next is overnight capacity, which relates down to the daytime capacity. So currently in the ordinance, it's, it's an overnight capacity. So basically allowed, what the, what the lodging ordinance allows, that's based on size of the bedroom. Typically, it's two, two people per bedroom plus two. So the theory is if you have a three-bedroom home, you have two people per bedroom, and then you have two on the couch. That, that's kind of where the plus two came in. But knowing that in, in some situations, rooms, bedrooms are so small where they may only be allowed to have one person in that bedroom based on the lodging requirement. That relates to the daytime capacity, because in 2008, when we first adopted ordinance for vacation home rental, we didn't, we were the first in the state, so we didn't have all this figured out, right? So overnight versus daytime, so overnight is the number that's allowed per the septic, per the bedroom size, per what the, the permit would specify. However, what would be allowed for daytime capacity? So for example, someone comes up from out of state and their local family wants to come visit for the day, how many people can visit for the day? That's, that's what we mean by daytime capacity. Currently, again, we don't have a regulation on that. The proposal, and some other counties went this way, is to base it on the parking. So as long as you have enough parking for those people, you could allow more daytime capacity than overnight, not to exceed one and a half times the overnight capacity. So there's been some thought that you just shouldn't be allowed any additional on daytime capacity. So, there's been some thought that you just shouldn't be allowed any additional on daytime capacity. Um, but we're looking at, the, the planning commission suggested was allow daytime to exceed overnight at one and a half times, not to exceed one and a half times. Next is guest records and the proposal is to have the, the renter, well, to have the, the owner, rather, specify the name, address, phone number, vehicle of all overnight guests. They would be required to manage that, keep that, and it would be available upon request if the department needed that information. Next is contact information. So, what we're looking for there is, you know, a lot of these homes are a secondary home or they're an investment property, so who do we contact? Who does environmental services or lodging staff or the sheriff's department contact if there's something needs to be addressed? And so, the requirement, the proposal is to have a contact available 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and that the host must respond to complaints within 30 minutes. The other part to that was to have a contact information for the host on the county's website. Um, a lot of counties have gone that direction and along with a system that helps identify people who are advertising their property and there, it's, it's kind of an enforcement mechanism, which I think Commissioner Clark may have some thoughts or comments or a friend with some experience related to that. I don't think it's foolproof. We don't know enough about it right now to even suggest what, what that would look like. Um, but what I can tell you is it would be very helpful and we, we could do this without, uh, just some staff time, is to post a, a map on the county's website. It could be clickable, you could look at who the host is and, and the public could get that host information, the name and the phone number, and they would be responsible. Then, then the public could look at that and contact a person if they had concerns. That's the concept with that. Violations is next. We're proposing the planning commission supported having one warning permit per permit cycle before a revocation hearing. Right now, it's, it's based on the department's discretion, how many complaints we get, what is the nature of the complaints. But I would say that the, the warning would have to be a valid complaint. So, it'd have to be substantiated, something that the department or the sheriff's op, office would be able to substantiate. They would get one warning per permit cycle and then after that, it would be a hearing for revocation. Next is rental frequency. There's been some discussion about should we limit how many days per year a rental could be offered? Uh, the suggestion from the planning commission was to allow it every day of the year, not have a limit on rental frequency. Lot size, I know this one got a little bit confusing at the planning commission and I'll, I'll try to explain the 66% of the lot size. But if you remember, at some of the recent public hearings we've had on vacation home rentals, some of them are very small lots, very close to neighboring, neighboring homes. And so, instead of recommending or suggesting a setback from home to home for a rental, we were looking at an overall lot size. So, 100% of the minimum lot size on a recreational development lake, which is most of our lakes in the county, is 40,000 square feet. We're suggesting a 66% lot size, which is 26,400 square feet. Why we choose 66% is that coincides with the state law for legal non-conforming lots of record. So, if you own a parcel and it's at least 26,400 square feet, you're allowed to do more things than if you have a tract under that. That's why we came up with 66%. It could be, you could choose a different percentage. You could pick half, you could pick 100%, 75, but that's where we came up with the concept of 66. Uh, next is what should we get in terms of a site plan or staking on the property? Uh, the suggestion is that the property lines need to be staked by a licensed surveyor. So, not only does the property owner need to know where their lot, lot lines are, but they actually need to be staked by a surveyor. That would be a minimum requirement. So, the renters, the host, and the neighbors would all have an established property line to work off of. Next is permit length. And the suggestion, if, if going with a provisional use would be, the first request is two years, the second request would be three years, and then third and subsequent would be five years. And that's all assuming that there's no violations. Next is a zoning district. Should these, should they be allowed in all zoning districts? Should they be prohibited in shoreland? The suggestion from the planning commission was to keep them eligible in all agricultural and residential districts. Neighborhood meeting is next and the concept there is that the first time a neighbor hears about a renter, a rental next to them, maybe shouldn't be from Stearns County. Um, this is done in the metro, it's done in different places in the, the state for mining. I think it's a, I think it's a good idea to consider. Basically, the, the renter would need to reach out to the neighbors, have a meeting, tell them what their plans are and hopefully they can, uh, work through some things before they, they would get a, a notice on a hearing. If we go with provisional use and there is no hearing, the neighborhood meeting would still be a requirement. Next is road access. Uh, this came up at a recent hearing for a rental as well. The suggestion is that we, we would require the applicant or the renter to submit comments from the emergency services that the property can be served. Next are fees. Um, obviously, we're not talking about a specific fee schedule today, but more in concept. This wouldn't be part of your ordinance change, but it would be, we're looking at suggesting, suggesting an increase because it is a, it does have commercial value related to it. Advertisement, we've come into some, some hiccups on people advertising but not offering for rent. Advertising but not renting. So, there's a really fine line between that and we're suggesting that the ordinance prohibit advertising if they don't have a valid license or permit. Uh, density, this has come up in the past as well. We currently do allow for and, and always have allowed for up to two rent, rentals per parcel. Now, I can tell you, it doesn't happen very often. We don't have any that, that are renting both tracks or both homes out on a parcel. It just doesn't happen very often where you have two established legal homes on a tract to rent out. Um, where that originated from, I can't remember. That came back from 2008. Um, so that was a consideration that the planning commission kind of had varying opinions on. Should it just be one or leave it at two? Ownership change. Uh, this requirement is related to if a, if the owner changes from, let's say, two people owning property and tenants in common and then they put it into LLC for business purpose, um, that the new provisional use would be required with the new owner unless the entity is the same. So, I think I explained this the last time, but unless we have one person being the same in the first ownership structure and the second, a new permit would be required if it's a, if it's a completely different owner. Additional comments that the planning commission had is that they felt that saturation. In other words, how many rent, rentals should be allowed within a certain distance or lake or neighborhood? Second is to allow one vacation home rental per entity or LLC. And that, the intent of that is to prohibit businesses or persons from owning multiples. And then, last is good, get input from insurance companies. So, that is what our planning commission recommended. I was asked a very good question at the beginning of the meeting is, did the planning commission vote on this? Is it consensus? Is it discussion? And just to be clear, the planning commission doesn't vote on I, each of these. It's a general consensus discussion and you are the ones holding the hearing. So, that's what we're presenting from the planning commission to you.
Okay. Anything else to add?
I don't have anything else to add. You just queue me up when you're ready to have the hearing.
Okay. Uh, anything from the board before we open the public hearing? Commissioner Persky?
Uh, Angie, again, what are, our intent today is to actually do what? If, just as we, as we're taking in information, I just want to get a handle on the big picture about what are we hoping to achieve today?
Yes, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Persky, Commissioner. So, it, you, really, you have three, what we see as three options. You could take no action today, which would leave the ordinance in place and life would go on, um, as it has been. And you would, I would say, except for making rentals provisional from interim, the ordinance would be considered less restrictive. The current ordinance is less restrictive in, in all provisions except permit type ex, compared to what we have currently. So, the proposal is more restrictive than what we currently have. So, if you want to leave things alone, you thank everybody for coming and we, we move on with vacation home rentals as we have since 2008. Okay? Um, the second option would be you could take action on some or all of the proposed changes. You could say, you know what, I really think we should do something now on A, B, and C. And then, you tell us that that's what you want to do and that's what you'll enact today. Uh, thirdly is you, if you're just really not sure and you have a whole lot of questions and you want us to research some more things, you would then, uh, ask us to do that. And then, at some point in the future, we would come back and ask you if you want to have a public hearing on those things. Either way, and I did talk to, um, the chair about this, we would recommend that you open and close the public hearing today. Uh, for the department to manage an, an month of an open public hearing is, is rather hard. Um, and so, to have an open and closed date is good. Obviously, you all get comments all the time and we would never not share them, but it's just easier if it's a clear process.
Anyone else have a comment before we open? No? If not, um, we'll open a public hearing and I guess there are people online that also would like to add public input. So, we can, I guess, however we want to do it, if, if we want to take them first.
Sure.
So, with that, we'll open the public hearing. You know, and I just maybe have one comment that I'd like to make. So, you know, I know there's people here who are for and against. It, you know, either way, it would be nice if you'd say, okay, no, I don't want to see this, but, you know, I, I could live with it with this. Or, yes, I think we should do it, but if, you know, if it comes to that, I can live with this. Because, you know, it's, we're here to, you know, make some of these decisions, but yet, you know, it helps to get input from everybody, so we make a good decision. So, you know, a lot of times we, you know, we hear no, 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 or yes, yes, yes. But it'd be nice if we could get some input. So, if, if you want to say no, but if the county board is gonna, you know, change ordinances or keep it the same, we could live with this. It would just, this is just for me, you know, it would help us or help me, anyway. So, with that comment, uh, if we want to take the WebEx ones first and ones online?
Yes, Mr. Chair, we should have David Ozzy and, secondly, Sandy. Uh, let's see, I just got a chat from the control room. Sandy does not have any comments at this time, but David would like to speak. So, David Ozzy was up next.
Yeah, and then, if we could, maybe limit to four minutes. So, it appears like we have a lot of people that would like to say something. So, with that, Sandy, if you'd like to go, or no, David would like to go ahead.
All right, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
All right, um, I'll see if, I don't know if my video is working here or not. All right, um, thanks for hosting this. Um, I'm David Ozzy. I own the property at 20366 Elfi Road, uh, which is a seasonal cabin located in Munson Township on the Sock River chain of lakes. Um, we currently have an active IUP for a vacation home rental on our property, which was issued through Stearns County. Um, unfortunately, we're unable to obtain a lodging license due to the recent moratorium from Munson Township. Uh, we were very close to getting that, but they kind of, uh, pulled the rug out from under us at the last minute, unfortunately. I'm just here, um, kind of in, in support of everything that you guys are doing. I mean, I, I think, I'm, I'm sure a lot of you have, have either stayed at an Airbnb or a VRBO or have family, maybe that even owns some. Um, me, as a, as a small business owner myself, you know, we bought this cabin in order for us to host family and friends and use it ourselves, but also when we weren't using it, to try to offset some of those expenses of owning a cabin. Um, unfortunately, you know, for the last two years, we've, we've been unable to do that, um, due to kind of everything that's going on. I do think it's great, you know, moving from the IUP to a provisional, I think, is, is excellent. I, I will say the IUP, you know, there's kind of a two-step process. It's getting the interim use permit, which is, I think, we had two public hearings. We talked to all of our neighbors. A lot of these items that, you know, we're going through here have come up in conversation just with our neighbors and letters and emails and phone calls. We've spent a lot of time on this, but I do think it's good to have those items in place. Um, I do also think, you know, VRBOs, Airbnbs benefit the local economy. We've gone to Jill's Cafe, um, we've gone to, uh, we were just at the River Lake Days. These are all things that we wouldn't have done had we not purchased this cabin and also things, you know, we could share these things with other people, um, attract more people, you know, to the area and support other small businesses. Um, I am in favor of being less restrictive, so either leaving everything as is or, you know, just, um, maybe not going to the extreme, kind of picking the middle of the road. I think the one, one big thing that stuck out to me was, you know, we want to be good neighbors. We have neighbors on our lake, on our shore, um, that are up until three or four in the morning. Um, but there's no way for me, you know, as just a neighbor to be like, hey, you're breaking this ordinance. Maybe there is and I don't know about it, but, um, my, I, I would prefer my contact information not be shared with everyone, just like, you know, any other homeowner probably wants their privacy. Um, I know there's ways to look up, you can look up, you know, people's information and stuff online, but I just think that could, that could go, uh, that could take a left turn. So, I guess that was one thing that I'm not super comfortable with. Um, I think everything else, we, we're kind of abiding by and I'm in favor of the MDH. We want good respectable guests at our, at our cabin. Um, we want to be good neighbors. We want to have a good relationship with people. We want people coming back. We want people coming to the area, want people to enjoy the fishing, you know, the lakes that we have, all the great community, you know, things. We want to share this place with people and unfortunately, we've been unable to do that. Um, so I would ask that maybe the process be a little bit more streamlined. It seems very cumbersome right now. You know, we, it took us almost a year to get through the IUP process. Um, and we've invested lots of money into the cabin in order to abide by all of these things that the IUP required. Um, a new flow meter, new windows, um, and we just did other upgrades to try to get the cabin ready to rent. But now, unfortunately, we have all this money invested and we're unable to move forward, which has been really frustrating and disappointing. Um, so I would appreciate, uh, either keeping the ordinance as is or maybe changing the IUP to provisional, um, and moving on. So, thank you for your time, I appreciate it. Uh, thanks so much.
Okay, thanks, David.
Okay, Mr. Chair, so I'll queue up the next two and then we'll keep going from there. Is that all right?
Sounds good.
Okay, we have Joe DeRose and Jim DeRose. And then, after that, Jim and Rob and Henches.
Yeah, and for the record, please just state your name and address. Thank you.
Yeah, Joe DeRose, uh, 21026 State Highway 22, Richmond, Minnesota. We're better known probably as Riverside Resort. First, I just want to say thank you guys for putting all the time into this, not only 14 years ago, but now I'm maintaining it over the, over the time. I think, um, nothing you hear today, certainly from others or from me, certainly is just, is going to be new information or revolutionary. I'm just a small-town resort owner guy. Um, but I think there's some wisdom in just taking a step back. We all get so pigeonholed into our narrative that it's sometimes, like you were saying, Commissioner, not just, it, it's good to see both sides and I certainly do. Um, but I, I want to recognize kind of the history of this in, in the past 14 years that Stearns County has had, short-term rentals has been one formal complaint issued to the county. Um, I think that there would be county chaos if, every time we had one complaint in 14 years, the moratoriums were evicted and public hearings were forced. And I think things went down this rabbit trail a bit too aggressively. Um, and I think there's some misinformation that maybe have caused that. Um, I, some of the concerns you're going to hear from, from neighbors is a lot of theoretical in nature. It hasn't occurred in Stearns County yet. Now, there's wisdom in being proactive, which I think we're doing. But overall, this isn't some county-wide epidemic. But overall, this isn't some county-wide epidemic that we have to stop or shut down. It's just, let's try to be ahead of the curve. So as a resort owner, I also want everyone to be aware, we do live in a highly regulated county and I appreciate that. I want to live in, you know, Stearns County has ordinances for both my resort and for short-term rentals that no other county in the state has. And I, like I said, I appreciate living in a highly regulated county. For example, the only reason me as a resort owner has a handful of short-term rentals within my resort is because of land use zoning ordinance section 10.2.23D. And it's just things like that that no other county has, otherwise mine would just be wrapped into the resort. So while frustrating at times to jump through kind of those hoops, I feel, I've read a few of the emails from some of the concerned neighbors casting shame on the board for not doing more. You guys have done more than just about anyone in the county or in the state, I mean. So I think some appreciation for that would be warranted more than the shame that you guys have experienced. I apologize for that from my neighbor's behalf. So being in that, I think some of the, from all of us, even the ones that are permitted operators of short-term rentals, we all and the concerned neighbors, we all have a little bit of frustration over the poor compliance rate and I think that's what maybe started a lot of these concerns with just the community wasn't aware that these standards existed because they weren't being enforced. And we're right now at about a 20% compliance rate for people that do rent their properties out. So I, one, so I question, you know, a lot of these new regulations, I'm okay with. My question, what good is it to add more regulations if you can't enforce the current ones? So I think more emphasis should be put on, let's get our county up to compliance and I'll talk a little bit more about that in a second. But like the other, the last gentleman was saying, short-term rentals do operate under an exponentially larger microscope than just your traditional lake homeowner or property owner. I have neighbors that just own their property that multiple weekends of summer, they have tents and RVs and family members come and shoot fireworks off. And if that was a short-term rental, that would be shut down immediately and the people would be going bananas over it, which I understand, that should happen. You know, last fall, one short-term rental operator had his license revoked because he had five occupants in it instead of four that he was regulated for. Now, it just kind of shows, people can do things with their own house that short, we are under this microscope that. I feel like the concern began because one, a couple neighborhoods in Munson Township had houses for sale and some investors came and looked at it and it wreaked havoc. What if all these become rentals? Short-term rentals are some of the well, best maintained and best managed properties on our lake system. We don't have these neighbors coming and shooting fireworks off. People don't spend $4,000 a week to do seven days of partying. They just come with their family and things like that. So I feel like we can be some of the better neighbors than just the people from the Twin Cities that uses it as their party house for the weekend. So yeah, back to that compliance rate, I presented with you, there are some counties in our state that do it exceptionally well. Cook County and Otter Tail County have quadrupled the number of short-term rentals we do and a 95% compliance rate versus our 20. So I think, and I think I've presented with you guys some options on how, what they're doing. Ironically though, I brought that up to Munson Township and some of the concerned neighbors said that opinion wasn't applicable because we're so different than Cook County. But what you'll hear today is most of the complaints that they have are concerns are revolving around Scottsdale, Arizona or Telluride, Colorado. I think we compare more favorably to Cook County. So I think we could use those as applicable arguments in moving forward. Moving forward, I would like to have some discussion on this packet regarding the frustration or the concern of having an LLC buy a short-term rental. Even if you've cut hair part-time in your basement, I think an LLC is probably a good practice to have in today's current environment. Me specifically, I mean, I live on site, I have proper signage, I have lots of parking options. I live on a township road, I have commercial insurance, oversized septic, strong neighbor relations, easy to contact. I have established quiet hours, but under this new rule or considerations, excuse me, I might not be able to buy a neighboring house because I want it under an LLC. So I think I would be a preferred operator. We really only have 12 weeks of the summer to make our revenue. People don't really vacation much in the wintertime. So like this, the potential cap on the monthly days you could rent, I don't think that's something that the planning board is thinking about, but that would put us out of business if we couldn't rent it for four weeks in July, kind of thing. Moving forward, finally, in summary, I feel like tourism in Stearns County is an economic necessity. I was asked to come to the local civic and commerce meeting last month and the EDA because some businesses started catching wind that tourism might be hindered because short-term rentals go away or might be more restrictive. A lot of them are quite frustrated at this initiative. One of the board members, even the EDA said, we just went through this big branding thing to help promote tourism in Richmond and now we're trying to, they're trying to shut it down. So one of the board members did, had this phrase that I liked. He said, "Our lake system and our natural resources are the economic lifeblood of our community." And I couldn't agree with him more. I mean, like we were saying, just this year at our resort, we've had people from Sweden, from Spain, from Germany, from Japan and all corners of the US come to our establishment. They don't come solely to eat at Jill's Cafe or to go to Cold Spring Bakery or to shop at the Crossroads Mall. They don't really even come to stay at Riverside Resort. They come to enjoy the natural resources that Stearns County provides. And I think we should, we would be doing a disservice to all the industries and businesses in our area if we didn't allow tourism in our community. So thank you for your time, thank you so much for all that you've done and I hope that you guys feel appreciated, so.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Jim DeRose, I live at 20793 Edgdale Court and I have the hotel in Cold Spring. But the tourism is unbelievable if you look at it from the economic side of it. Just at my hotel, it's amazing when we have a group and they all walk, the teals, they get snacks, they go to Hardee's. I don't even have to get into that, all the money they spend in the community. Back in the eighties, it seemed like there was a lot of new government regulations. So in early nineties, we had a meeting of central Minnesota businesses and all of the local officials were invited and stayed also. So we had the township, the county, both our state senate and representatives and other officials and we talked about how these regulations are such a burden and some of them don't pertain. What is true for downtown Minneapolis might not be true for Richmond. But yet, the law is the law, we got to do it, you know? So things like that were discussed, I won't get into that whole meeting. But it was a good meeting and everybody walked out of there and said, we have to do something to try not to overburden businesses and it seems like there's still more and more regulations. But in 2008, and I mentioned in an earlier meeting, I was really happy when Stearns County took the lead and came up with a licensing process. I don't think anybody can argue that these houses aren't getting rented. And it's even if your sister-in-law comes up and uses your home for a while on a lake, they probably throw you a hundred bucks and they're renting your house. But now we had a, we had a system that, this is just the tip of the iceberg, the legal ones. We know there's a bunch of illegal ones out there, but I'm glad we have this, there is a process. And I, again, Stearns County was a leader in that and I was at the time on the board for the Resort Association. I told them, why doesn't a state look at Stearns County and see what they're doing as far as licensing or regulating? And here, years earlier, I had said, we don't need as many regulations, but this is a good thing. But where do you draw the line on this? And I just asked that people be reasonable. At the last time I spoke at one of these meetings, I talked about, if you drive around on a weekend, many houses have tents and campers plugged in and, and I had a laugh on Saturday, my wife and I went for a walk. It was unbelievable, both sides of the roads had cars, people having a party at their house. My first reaction was great, they're having a good time, they have bonfire, playing games. The second reaction is, they basically violated everything on this sheet of paper here, especially the daytime occupancy and I'm sure a lot of them stayed overnight. But I don't know, should the county get involved with that, you know, should you say? No guests to your house now, you know, or limit the number of guests. Where do you draw the line on what's appropriate? Again, there will be, there will be people renting their houses, there will be people using these houses, but let's try to regulate them. And we do have this process now for, and I think I've heard a couple people say that too. It's not that they're running it so much as a business, they have this house when they're not using it. There is an opportunity to defray some of your expenses. They may end up in, being a losing proposition anyways, but it helps. And again, some may be running this business, but again, I just keep coming back to that. If we just be reasonable in our, in our request here and what is done here, I'm not going to go through each item. You could come up again with so many different things that the government could regulate. But some of us maybe just be a little more friendly with our neighbors and walk, maybe join during the day and say, I'm glad you're having a good time. But I guess, I guess that's all I'll have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Morgan?
Jim, I just wanted to ask now, in your case, the short-term rentals are essentially attached to your resort?
No, I don't own a resort, my son Joe just spoke that.
In that case, those are essentially?
But I did own a resort when that came into being, when they began the licensing, yeah. I was one of the first to have a licensed vacation rental, but I don't own them anymore.
Okay.
But my wife and I have talked, we have a nice house and the day may come where we want a single level home, but why couldn't I rent, let somebody rent my house out? Why should we say, no, you can't do that?
So in Joe's case then?
Yeah, yeah, so our resort used to be much larger back 50 years ago and my grandpa sold off some, some land during some hard times. We've reacquired those properties that used to be part of the resort, but we were told they couldn't be under the resort umbrella anymore because of density issues. So that's why we have three now, short-term rental units, independent of, yeah, because new ordinance have come. So under, like I said, virtually every other county that I've looked at doesn't have that. So I might, yeah, I don't, I see definitely both sides of this argument. But it shouldn't be where me as a resort owner can't buy another property when anyone else in the world can. Does that make sense?
So yours are right next to what is your resort?
Correct, absolutely, it's on the same Fairborn Drive. There's actually three additional ones down that drive that we'd like to acquire at some point that used to be part of the resort. We're not forcing the issue, but when they sell, it'd be nice to have that as an opportunity. And I think, like I said, the compliance rate, the moratoriums have actually kind of made that worse because now there is no legal way to get a permit and it kind of shows a short-sightedness of, I feel like, from Sauk Rapids Township. They only had one license, short-term rental and several others that were unlicensed. Well, now they shut down the one good one and the other.
You meant Sauk Center Township, I think.
Sauk Center, sorry, yeah, township, yeah, sorry.
That's all right.
But yeah, so it's just, I'd like to see the moratoriums lifted, I'd like to see, I mean, if you want to amend some of these, great. But yeah, if you have any more questions on our particular one, but I know this is a county-wide issue, I don't want to just single out my specific concerns.
Okay, thank you. Next. Good morning.
Good morning, my name's Robin Hentges, I'm from 31128 163rd Avenue in Avon. Jim, who you'll hear from in just a little bit, is with me today and we are definitely for short-term rentals. We actually, in our primary home where we live, we had a lot of kids and my mom lived with us for years and in those empty spaces, we are doing two short-term rentals at our home. So we live there, we kind of have what we call our apartment and then we have two other areas that are short-term rentals and, you know, it goes really well. It allows people to come into the area, like Joe and Jim talked about so eloquently. You know, they said a lot of what we believe, but we have people coming actually next week again from Hong Kong who have come back several times because they have kids going to the prep school. So, you know, some of these, the things that have been being brought up of what ifs, all of the negative things that could happening, really, we're not seeing it. And we do go by your rules, we have been regulated, you know, we've jumped through all the hoops and we feel like those rules actually, you know, I think they're already stiff enough, I think that's hard enough. There's a whole group of people that are not jumping through the hoops and then there's a reason they've gone underground. Either it's because they just don't know or probably just because they don't want to do it. They don't want to, you know, make sure their septic is updated or have their, whatever the reasons are. There's so few of us that are actually licensed and so many that are not. I feel like our efforts would be, would be better to be looking at those unregulated. I think that's where maybe some of the problems are coming in. Thank you very much.
Jim Hentges, same address as Robin, 31128 163rd Avenue in Avon. We do have the vacation rental that Robin had mentioned, we've had that one running for five-plus years. Absolutely no issues with our neighbors or any of the people that have stayed with us. We've had hundreds of people stay with us. We have a map in our garage and there's pins for people come from all over the world. We've had, I think, somebody from almost every continent. So we get to meet a lot of different people that come into the area for various reasons, either for business or have family members in the area that they can't all stay at one place, so they rent our house out for that. We also have another place on a cabin on a lake that we bought, that's the same lake our daughter and son-in-law have a cabin on, where we hope to retire there some year. We're not retired yet and we are renting that one out also, that was approved two years ago. And again, the neighbors there, we've talked to them, they have had no issues with the people that are staying at our place, either one of our places. We did start, you know, there's a question about an LLC. They're afraid these big corporations are going to come in and buy up all these cabins and turn them into hotels. But we started an LLC to protect ourselves with lawsuits that go out just about every day against anybody. That's why we did that, so we don't lose what we do have. So we do have two vacation rentals out of our house and we do have a cabin. And if this is, goes through, where LLC is only allowed to have one, we wouldn't be able to do that. So I'd like you not to consider that. Thank you.
Thank you.
So you live, physically live at one of these vacation?
Yes, we do.
Okay, so you're there to monitor and then you're very close to the other one?
Yeah, we're 10 minutes away from the other one.
Okay.
Yeah, we live in a decent-sized home that we were able to buy it off and rent out some areas, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, Mr. Chair, we have Mike Bannan and after that, Lenell Johnson.
Good morning, my name is Mike Bannan, I live on 24596 County Road 9, Richmond, Minnesota. I am on the Munson Township Board, Planning Zoning, sorry, but not the Board. I did not know Joe was going to be here. They were talking, I couldn't make the last meeting, but I did listen at the Stearns County Planning Zoning meeting. I listened to it on, over the phone, whatever. I was, I didn't know he was going to be here. I was afraid that if they were going to make, you can't have rental close to each other, he could not have that anymore, buy that purchase down the line, but he took care of that. Believe you me, I've got an earful. A couple of times I wanted to turn my hearing aid down, but that's not possible. One of the things that I got was, well, I don't live on a lake. Why are you concerned or whatever? Well, my answer to that was, and I think just like you, I live in Munson Township and I represent all of Munson Township, not just on the lake, on every. So if a farmer wants to turn into Airbnb, he can do that. I live, I don't live on, I live on a county road, so I'm, should be partial, put it that way, to everybody, I'm hoping so. Okay, false claims, I'm kind of nervous. When we started this, we had some people that were nervous, obviously. And they gave us a sheet of stuff that people, you know, complaints and all this stuff. Well, I think we sent it to the Planning Zoning, they looked at it and they had a lot of things that were false on that. I'm thinking, false claims, we have to do something about false claims because if they're going to say anything, they can say anything to a cop that says, grandma, pass some gas. Well, that's, that's too loud, let's, then we've got a claim against them. We have to kind of do that. Also illegal, if I want to rent one out, I got a friend, I can rent it out to a friend, right? I mean, not rent it out, I can let a friend stay there, right? Okay, this guy comes from Chicago and calls me up, or New York, let's go to New York, because I got a claim that there's somebody from New York has a New York license plate. That, well, you mean, if you don't come from Minnesota, you're not a decent person? So anyways, so I let- come from Minnesota, you're not a decent person? So anyways, so I let this guy stay by place. So he happened to leave 1,000, 2,000, whatever it is, in a drawer. Well, he's my friend. That's illegal. We don't want that. We want to get everybody in compliance. Also, we had also that, that's in a residential place, and it's commercial, because it's our Airbnb. We had one of the complaints of the people that were there, well, I don't know exactly what they sold, but they sold Mary Kay in their house. But they were complaining about the Airbnb. Well, that was also not, you know, it was not residential. I'm, you know, I, what is commercial, what isn't? And then also, I was going to say with, because I didn't know Joe was here, who, how, what standards do you put for being commercial or LC and C, or just say Marriott buying 10 houses? Where do you put the line? You know, can Joe do it, but not Mary? You know, I don't know where to do that. And that's, if I had the answer, I wouldn't be talking here. Close to proximity place, I'm thinking that if I had a wedding, which I have to go to South Dakota, have a wedding too, wouldn't that be nice to have two or three of them fairly close together, so you could have a party, not party, but you could talk to each other, have breakfast, have coffee in the morning? So that's about it, and thank you for what you're doing.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name's Lenell Johnson. I'm at 9216 Riverview Drive in Becker, Minnesota. I have a licensed rental in St. Cloud. I have a number of short-term rental properties, including three rentals in Stearns County. I provide short-term rentals for traveling nurses. 70% of my guests last year were medical professionals. I've housed families of patients in long-term treatment at St. Cloud Hospital and other professionals working in the area. The length of stay ranges from three days to three months, or four months. There's a need for this type of housing. In the past two years, there's been a huge increase in the need for traveling nurses. St. Benedict's and the St. Cloud Hospital have suffered critical staffing shortages. They need to supplement their staff with traveling nurses. The typical nurse contracts are 13 weeks long. They cannot sign a one-year apartment lease. And as you can imagine, living in a hotel room for three months would be depressing and expensive. So we are not vacation rentals, but we are short-term rentals. The proposed regulations seem to use these terms interchangeably. My concern is, changes intended to regulate vacation rentals are going to impact all short-term and medium-term rentals. Adding new regulations like preventing LLCs from owning short-term rentals, or adding a limit of one short-term rental that can be owned, would kill my small business. We already have noise ordinances in place. Please don't create new regulations that are going to have a lot of unintended consequences. Also, I don't own any lake property, but I would like to speak for the users of short-term rentals, as a user of short-term rentals. As someone who spent a week at a cabin in Richmond this summer, we enjoyed, I was grateful to enjoy a week on the lake. In my opinion, lake property owners should not be able to restrict the experiences on properties they do not own. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, next, Mr. Chair, we have Joe Kackelman, and then Glenn and Lisa Holt House.
Good morning. I'm Joe Kackelman. I live on 18579 Long Lake Road in Richmond. First of all, I want to talk about the Planning and Zoning Committee I went to about two weeks ago. It went into almost quarter to 11:00 at night, and there was a gentleman there who owns 40 acres of land, and he wants to move his business, which was called Scenic Specialties, onto this property. And he was denied by the Planning and Zoning because there was a large presence of people opposed to it, for the reasons of safety, noise, business in a residential area. They wanted to make sure that he was going to do background checks on all of his employees to see if they had any criminal behavior in their background they were concerned about, privacy. And so he was denied. And I'm thinking, how is he different than people who have a home they live in, and then somebody is going to open a business next door to them, which is, it seemed kind of controversial to me. And then as far as the DeRoses go, they're kind of in a different situation. They own a hotel, and that's where people should stay in large groups if they're here for a wedding or some type of event, not in three parcels of land next to two people who live there permanently. And the other gentleman owns a resort, and that's another option for people that need to rent more than one parcel to have a group gathering. You go to a resort and patronize them. At the bare minimum, I would like to see cameras installed outside of all these rentals, because that way the landowner can police their own property. They should be required to have substantial liability insurance, and saturation limits should be considered. As I talked about large groups, they should patronize the resorts and the hotels. The theme that I hear over and over here is compliance, compliance, compliance. They have all these ordinances in place currently, and other ordinances, like you can only have one structure per parcel to stay in, yet you go through the Chain of Lakes on any given weekend, and there's a home, and then there's campers, and a couple campers, and then more campers, which is a violation of an ordinance, but it's not policed. So we have all these ordinances in place now, but the theme we hear from everybody is, there's no way that Stearns County can police and regulate these compliances. You look at El Rancho Manana, you've known, they've known for years they're not in compliance with their septic, but yet they're continued to operate. So for somehow, you need to hire people or something, so you can get a compliance structure to go after these people who are violating the ordinances that are already in place. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Lisa Holt House. My husband Glenn and I are owners of 21424 Forest Hill Road in Richmond. Many of the letters that you received opposing short-term rentals are from tearaways who are our neighbors across the street from us. So first of all, I'd like to address the wedding that keeps coming up that was had at our property. The wedding was held in 2018. The couples were friends of our family. Because they were friends of our family, we would have had the right to allow the small ceremony to take place on our property with or without a short-term rental license. However, we did contact Stearns County prior to the wedding to ensure it was allowed. We were told it was. They weren't a random couple, just want to reiterate that. They were friends of our family. After the wedding, we received an email from Mary Lou, and it stated, although the guests were polite and did not behave poorly, she was not happy that there was an event at our home. I promptly replied, letting her know that the wedding was in fact friends of ours. We did get pre-approval from the county, but we wanted to be respectful of our neighbors. So we would not be hosting any more events at our home. We have never had another event at our home, yet we continue to hear about this wedding from four years ago. I'd also like to shed some light on the type of guests we've had at our home. Our guests are families, typically grandma and grandpa with their children and grandchildren, excuse me, wanting to enjoy a true Minnesota vacation, fishing on the lake. Our guests are elderly siblings who gather together after a funeral to celebrate life. Our guests are people gathering for spiritual retreat. Our guests are famous country singers, spending time with children, enjoying Minnesota winter. Most importantly, our guests are friends and families of our neighbors, our neighbors who live on Forest Hill Road and on the Chain of Lake, use our cabin. I'd like to read a couple of reviews from people who've stayed at our home. This kind of gives you an idea of who they are, what they're doing. "This home was beyond beautiful. We stayed here with one of our family, one other family, and a total of five children. There was so much space, it was easy for adults to stay up and play games without waking the kids. We swam both at the house's lake access and the beach at Lions Community Park, so the kids could play in the sand. My son learned to swim on this vacation." Side note, we let Lisa know we were having issues with the grill, and she brought over a new one the same afternoon. Another review, "Our children and grandchildren joined us for the most enjoyable weekend at the cabin to celebrate my wife's 60th birthday. The house, yard, lake access provided the perfect setting for family fun. You can pack light for a visit because Lisa provides everything you need." Excuse me. "Lisa was also very prompt in responding to our questions and took care of a problem with the grill very quickly. We were a bit sad to say goodbye to the cabin, agreed it would be worth booking again." Thanks, Lisa, for your, for your efforts to get us a full propane tank for the grill in time for dinner. So as you can see, we're very hands-on owners. If there's an issue, we're prompt in addressing it. We have onsite property managers who live next door to our cabin. We are not absentee owners, and we do not let anyone and everyone stay at our home. We vet each and every one of our guests. I love that as a short-term rental owner, we can give these families a place where they can gather and create memories that last a lifetime, families who may not otherwise have the opportunity to experience Richmond, Minnesota, and the Chain of Lakes. My request would be, excuse me, that you would keep things as is or be less restrictive. Thank you.
Thanks.
Glenn Holt House, 21424 Forest Hill Road. I'd like to reiterate everything my wife said, and emphasize the simple fact that our other neighbors do use our property. In the last eight years, several of them have used it multiple times, and take advantage of the fact that there is a rental there when they have family over that doesn't accommodate their own property. So it is a very good function of our, of our house. I've got a concern about the additional planning and zoning comments down below on this thing. I would recommend that you guys go on a case-by-case basis on that. The fact that the LLC, that should be on every business entity to protect personal assets. Any attorney would recommend that, whether it's being purchased for a short-term rental or as a part-time cabin. Any attorney would recommend the fact that there be an LLC attached to something separate than their personal property. Intent to prohibit business, personal, from owning multiples. Like I said, case-by-case basis, you want to encourage the people that are doing a good job, and maybe put out of business the people that don't want to do a good job. You know, there can be business owners that have multiple units there, that are doing a great job, and there can be one guy down the street that's not doing a very good job at all, and you want him to go away. I would recommend case-by-case basis on all of those points. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Mr. Chair, we have Clyde Terway, followed by Don Jensen and Anthony Sagali.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners and staff. I'm Clyde Terway, 21417 Forest Hill Road, Richmond. By definition, a short-term rental is a motel, clear and simple. Rooms are rented for sleeping in exchange for money. Then why should they be allowed in our residential zone District R1? They belong in commercial zone District C, just as Stearns County Ordinance 439 clearly designates. You had a letter in your packet from Minnesota Hospitality. They clearly state that these are commercial businesses. So why are we even talking about this? It does not appear that our policymakers and administrations have the backing to enforce the zoning ordinance as it was intended. That motel should be restricted to commercial zones. Society now wants short-term vacation rentals where it is convenient for them. That happens to be on the water, so to speak, in the Shoreland Overland District, not where zoning planned. So if we are owners of the property on a body of water and do not want a commercial business next door, should we suck it up, shut up, and welcome them? That's why we're here, because it isn't right. But you don't want to, or you don't know how to ban them from R1 districts. So that takes us to regulations. Short-term rentals are transient by nature. While by definition, they rent for 30 days or less, experience has shown us there are different groups there pretty much weekly. Few stay more than one week, some less. There's always someone coming and going. We don't know the owners. They're not there. Do they affect our sense of security? You betcha. All short-term vacation rentals are not equal. As you have seen by letter and heard from verbally, some in our area are managed as originally intended. The DeRoses, Ms. Kreipes wrote a letter, and the Henshess, the owners live onsite or directly adjacent to them. They are supervised, and any rules are enforced. If someone has an issue, they know where to take it. There probably are no violations reported on these type of properties. When Environmental Services sets up protocol for reporting violations, a true picture will be established as to how many there are. I strongly disagree with Mr. DeRosa's one violation reporting, because I know of quite a few more that can be documented. I'm tired of hearing the argument that people should be able to do whatever they want with their property. There are lots of rules and regulations, and no, we can't. Take a look at the dog, cat, or animal rules. Try to put a storage shed down by the lake. Even farmers with lots of land have rules to follow and can't do just anything they want. Why does it appear that the county and townships are insistent on giving more consideration to someone or a business buying a property and have a short-term vacation rental than the existing property owners that have developed the neighborhood? So if you're going to insist that they be allowed in the residential zones, put restrictions on them. The list proposed by the county is a starting point. I feel strongly that saturation has to be addressed in the regulations. How many short-term vacation rentals can be in a neighborhood before it doesn't feel like a neighborhood? There are many ways to do this, one being to prevent companies or businesses from owning them. One example is to allow one per real person owner as Rockville's ordinance then.
Clyde, you have about a minute yet, Clyde?
Yeah, okay, I'm just about done. By incorporating stricter regulations now, you will prevent headaches for many in the future. Please do not bastardize our neighborhoods by allowing a free-for-all. Promote tourism by promoting our resorts, campgrounds, and motels. Thank you for your patience and consideration.
Thank you.
My name is Don Jensen. I live at 19413 Florence Circle in Richmond, on the Sock River Chain of Lakes in Munson Township, and I'm just a few houses away from Wakefield Township. So we're kind of unique. We're right in the center. We've got, you know, neighbors across one way, and some right next door. There's even one property nearby where the township line goes right through the middle of the property. So what goes on in one affects the other. So non-owner occupied Verbos, Airbnbs, and now the new Marriott brand, and the like, are unsupervised hotels. They do not belong in R1-zoned residential neighborhoods. They belong with other hotels in commercial zoning. If we allow homes to be turned into Marriott's, what's next? Homes turned into Starbucks, Dairy Queens, and McDonald's, or sports bars? I mean, that'd be great on the lakes, right? Follow Sartell's lead to take care of this easily and efficiently. Classify them as the hotels they are, to be in commercial zoning, not residential. Or follow Rockville's lead, and restrict them to ownership by a natural person with a limit of one, no business ownership. And that kind of protects the old-school family cabin situation there. We are begging you, before it's too late and our lakeshore and neighborhoods become overrun by them- as has been the case across the country and internationally, even one is too many in a neighborhood. This adulteration of housing should not be allowed. Commissioner Lenzmeyer said at the end of the planning meeting on the 21st that we need to get this right, or we will have to keep coming back to make changes. So far, it has appeared that far too much consideration has been given to the perceived rights of incoming businesses, displacing the rights of the families that live in these R1 residential neighborhoods. It is disrespectful, unacceptable, and just plain wrong. These hotel owners, LLCs, and the like can go elsewhere to chase the latest investment opportunity. They don't belong in residential neighborhoods, and we will keep coming back to you until you demonstrate that you understand that. And if this isn't stopped, there will be more of us as the short-term rental expansion continues. Please understand that the goal should not always be about money. Sometimes it has to be about our residents, our families, our neighborhoods, and our communities. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners, Chair. My name is Anthony Segali, and I live at 18693 Dairywood Road in Kimball. And I want to say thank you for holding this meeting, and I also want to say thank you for the things that you've done in the past and the ordinances that you have in place. It's quite evident that there are some very successful short-term rentals that operate in Stearns County, and people that are very respectful for how that all transpires. Personally, I have stayed at VRBOs, Airbnb, especially traveling in Europe. And so I don't want to see it go away, because there is an opportunity for it, but we also need to regulate this thing. Because we're in a situation where the VRBOs, it's changing. Short-term rentals wasn't part of Marriott or Expedia. Expedia owns, is a subsidiary for the rental piece of VRBO. So it's much different than it was eight or 10 years ago. And so some of the issues that are addressed in your proposed ordinance, I think, are very good. And they need to be there. For us to say, "We don't need any more ordinances. We don't need any more compliance. We don't need any more sheriffs. We don't need any," you know, just let us do what we need to do, hasn't worked in the past. So I'm asking you to give some serious consideration to what's on the agenda and the proposals, because I do support that. The issues around VRBO are great. The short-term rentals, without onsite management, most of them are, they invite issues. The ones that are running very well, they have onsite management. But there's nothing in an ordinance that say they do that. People just are respectful, and they do it. Also, when you put it on a recreational property, you add complexity to it. You have your jet skis, your motors, your ATVs, your snowmobiles. Everybody brings all of their toys to whatever this piece of property is. And we've seen where ordinances address property that is too small, can't hold this, affect neighbors. You know, they just don't, they're not respectful of what it is. I have been personally almost run over on the road because somebody was coming through. And in today's world, I don't think I feel comfortable going down there and telling them, "You can't do this." You know, we're in a different world today, and so compliance needs to be put there. I want to leave you with four things. This is a business, needs to be defined. What is it? Is a family? There's four items. Is it a business? Okay, it is. Is it for a small family, a large family, a business, a college night out, a weekend, a anniversary? What is it for? And then where it is. Two, these units are in an R1, and what's the impact? Some of these impacts are large. Is the facility adequate on size, parking barrier? Is it signed handled? And then what's the enforcement? So when I look at the proposed ordinance, which I like, there's still a few things to go, and it still needs to be added to. I am a person that doesn't really like to have all these rules either, but I live in a world that doesn't operate on always-good faith. So it's guidelines that need to be put there. So thank you very much for listening.
Mr. Chair, we have one more caller on the line, Sandy Salter, which I believe is getting queued up now.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you so much, like others have said, for holding this public meeting and allowing people to speak. Thank you so much for your response to the concerns that were brought to your attention. I appreciate that you're sticking by your mission and trying to approach it in a fair and just way. I, sorry, I didn't state my address first. My husband and I own 18034 State Highway 22 in Richmond. We also own the two-acre parcel of land right next to it. We do use the property for ourselves. And as David was mentioning earlier this morning, when we're not there, we do rent it out through Airbnb and Verbo to try to help with the expenses. I just wanted to reiterate that we are in compliance with everything that has been mentioned as the recommendations for what you go with from the Planning Commission. I am concerned about all of those that aren't in compliance. My assumption is that's where the issues are occurring, is from those, you know, 60-some rentals that are being listed out there in Stearns County that are not in compliance. They don't have the permit. They don't have the lodging license. I would guess that's where the problems are coming from. So I would encourage you to consider somehow to put some time and money and energy into finding out how to get more compliance on what is in place right now. I agree with, it was Joe and some others that have said that the LLC limitation is of concern. That is definitely a concern of mine, just from the standpoint that it is just legally recommended that if you are renting property, that you would do that out of an LLC to protect your own personal assets. If you were to be sued, you would not want to lose everything you personally own. So you're trying to protect yourself and your family from devastation. And in our case, that's why we did it, out of legal recommendation, nothing else. We're not trying to run a dynasty or anything like that. We're just regular people who wanted to own a lake home so we could make wonderful memories with our own family. But it is very, very expensive, and it's really not doable for us personally in our financial situation to do that unless we can rent it out. The other point I wanted to make was, again, what David said, that I don't have a problem with the majority of things that are being recommended. I think they're all good things except for that contact information on the website. I am very available. I respond to the renters at our property very quickly. You can see that in reviews from our renters. And I am on the ball with that all the time. And we have good communication and a good relationship with the one neighbor we do have. He has our numbers. He knows how to get ahold of us if there is some sort of problem. He has not once ever, in the last two years, gotten ahold of us because of a concern that he has had from a renter. So I personally don't, just as anybody in Richmond probably wouldn't want their information put up on a website, I personally don't want my information put up on a website for anybody to click and be able to call and reach me. I am very responsive. If there is an issue, I want to be contacted if there's something I need to be aware of, but I just don't think that should be put out there publicly. And just finally, from the standpoint of a renter myself, my husband and I started renting through Verbo and Airbnb after our fourth child was born. So that was about 15 years ago, because a hotel just didn't work for us. We had little kids. They needed more space. We needed a kitchen. It was too expensive to eat out. If we were staying in a hotel, we would have to get two hotel rooms. It just was not, you know, feasible if we wanted to go on vacation. It was a lot less expensive in many ways for us to rent. Now finally, we're on the other side of it. We get to do the renting, and we just think it's such a valuable thing for people to be able to have the option to go somewhere that they can be comfortable. They can gather with their family. Their little kids can take naps while they enjoy spending time on our deck. They don't have to be stuck in a small hotel room. They can cook in our kitchen. And all of those other wonderful benefits to people and their vacation experience. I think short-term rentals, when they are being used for those purposes, just provide people with a different experience. It's a pleasant experience for us compared to a hotel room, and I'm glad that we've been able to offer that. So thank you very much.
Okay, Mr. Chair, your final conclusions on the public hearing. A couple of things. I do have a few written pieces of testimony to enter into the record that came in after your board packet went out on Friday. And then if you want to first call for any other speakers, there was some kind of on the fence when I asked if they wanted to speak. So would you like me to summarize the written and then call for any last speakers?
Yeah, why don't you summarize them? That'll give people a chance if they want to come back up again.
So incorporated into the public hearing record are all of the written comments that were submitted as of last Monday at 4:30. The board did receive those in their entirety and a summary. And then since then, I did also receive an email from Joe DeRose, but he spoke, so I'm not going to go through that. Linda Krippus, "Their rental was the first approved in the state of Minnesota and Stearns County. She helped with writing the first ordinance in 2008. Rules could be tweaked, but a total ban should not be put in place. She likened it to the initial Uber ban. People want the ability to use their personal assets in new ways to help offset increasing costs, with their homes and the cars being the two largest ticket items that they own. Vacationing patterns have changed over the decades with people not wanting to spend time at the lake. Rentals put a lake option within reach of many working families." She supports property occupancy being the same as overnight occupancy, citing reasons given to her by the department related to the septic system. She supports an insurance requirement. Most renters at their rental were three generations, not partiers. They do contribute to the local economy. She supports a monetary penalty for breaking the rules. Supports requiring surveillance cameras, because cameras would help owners and the county refute or substantiate neighborhood complaints. And finally, that she wanted to go on record that she no longer has a rental. They just sold their home and moved into the rental that they did have. Last written piece of testimony that you did not receive was from Joanne Schneider. She feels that it is important to consider access for all residents to our area lakes. Most middle-class families have been priced out of lake ownership but can't afford one week. She doesn't see any issues with noise, quiet hours, safety, and they should apply to everyone on the lake, not just renters. And their cabin that they rent, they, their rental, is accessible for those with physical disabilities. Okay, so with that, that's all the written testimony that we received. And then I'll step back and see if there's any last minute.
Okay. Anyone else wishing to speak at the public hearing? Please state your name and address.
My name is Teresa Bransner, and I am at 21067 Elkview Circle. I wasn't planning on getting up and speaking today, but I'm going to do it anyway. I am opposed to the vacation rentals, because, number one, they are in our residential neighborhoods. But I do know, you know, looking at this proposed ordinance and what you've gone through on, I like some of the restrictions. I really do. And I just feel that if they're going to be coming into our neighborhoods, they need to be heavily restricted at first, simply because of the fact that they are in our residential neighborhoods. And I heard a comment that, I think it was by Mr. DeRose, that the businesses are overburdened with restrictions, and it makes them difficult to operate. But I also feel that if they're coming into the residential neighborhoods, there should be a secure amount of restrictions on them. It is our private property that we own out on the lakes, and so we have a right to that privacy. And so there's always the transancy issue with people coming in and out of the neighborhoods. On our particular circle, we've had several homes that have been purchased by retirees that have sold their homes in the cities and just recently have had discussion with neighbors, and they have commented that they didn't know that this was going on up here. But now they've purchased these retirement homes, and they in no way want to be surrounded by short-term vacation rentals, because they came up to get away from all of that. And our neighborhood's usually pretty quiet. And that's the other aspect, is that all neighborhoods are different. And so one of the particular things that I have an issue with is the parcel size as to whether or not they're going to allow a vacation rental. And I think it needs to be taken into consideration. How far is it from the next home? Every neighborhood varies. Ours has some homes that are closer to one another, and I think that's a big factor for having them in our neighborhoods. Also, the particular lady that spoke on the nursing, that's a little bit different. And that's, again, it's a varying issue. Some people do very well at managing, and some people do very poorly. It's the poorly managed ones that cause the problem. So all the more reason for restrictions, because if the people who are managing very well, they can pertain to the restrictions, and at least it keeps those at our poor management into check. And I would ask that you would look, you know, not make a decision today, but do, you know, bring in a little bit more research. And Mr. Bainan alluded to falsehoods being made, and I think that's something that I'll be taking up at the Munson Township next board meeting, because that's been voiced by Mr. DeRose and Mr. Bainan several times now. And I take issue with that, simply because most of the things that, in fact, all of the things that we have submitted, both to our township and here, and to the planning and zoning at Stearns County, has been based on research that has happened throughout the country. So that is something that I would like to have facts presented at our next meeting. So Mr. Bainan could explain himself a little bit more clearly on that. Also, the issue of venues, you know, the wedding, I know that came up too. And I think that that's a possibility. Maybe it's not happening a lot, but it could easily happen if they aren't restricted. And it is a fact that it is an industry. And there are those individuals that are buying their cabins and renting them out to help pay for their extra piece of property. However, it is a reality that Marriott is jumping into the game. Jeff Bezos has now made a statement that he's going to be looking to buy up private homes for rentals. So it's becoming bigger, and I think the restrictions are huge. And I think that you need to spend more time on it, and I appreciate the time you are spending on it. Thank you.
My name is Lee Steckman. My address is 20929 Elkview Circle, Munson Township. I've lived there 25 years. I retired there. I want to thank I wanna, uh, thank Tris for bringing up a point that I was going to bring up also, was that the retirees that, uh, are there on the lake and in our neighborhood and, and there's gonna be more and more people. That's what I have seen. More and more people coming to the lakes that want to retire there full-time. These are full-time residents, not short-term. They're there year-round. They shop locally. They buy cars locally, just as I have over the past 25 years. Not just for the summer. You're getting more and more, I've seen this over my time, more and more people living on the lake, retiring there, want to retire there full-time. So you have that income coming in constantly through the whole year. I wanted to mention another thing that concerns me. I, uh, I happened to stop at a gas station on my way in here at, uh, Cold Spring, and there was an officer there. I believe he was a deputy sheriff. He had sheriff on the car. And, uh, I asked him his comments of short-term rentals and how they were impacting his job. Well, what he said was, "We've had complaints in the Sauk Center area, not so many, uh, around the lakes in where I live, but there has been complaints." And I said, "Well, if, how do you feel if this short-term rental, uh, if it's approved and if it's not regulated properly? How are you going to restrict? How are you gonna be able to handle, uh, the influx of complaints that you do have? Cause they will be there." And he said, "Well, it kinda remains to be seen." I don't know what impact, uh, that there will be. So, the point is, I guess, that I'm not sure how this is all gonna be regulated. I think you're gonna open it up if you don't restrict it very tightly. And I don't know who is going to regulate it. I don't see that Stearns County has the, the funds or the manpower, the personnel to regulate what is happening or what's gonna happen. How are you gonna regulate it? And my other comment is, shouldn't we be spending more time, more effort, more money on crime prevention than trying to regulate short-term rentals? So, my opposition is to, uh, having short-term rentals, uh, in our one neighborhood such as I live in. And, uh, I guess that's pretty much all the points I, I wanted to make. Um, ban all the hotels, motels. If you're going to open something up, short-term rentals, the, in my mind, they need to be owner-occupied. And that's the only way you're gonna be able to regulate it. I can go to my neighbor next door and, uh, talk to him if there's, if I have an issue. And it, and we can work it out. With short-term rental, I don't know how you're gonna do that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kathy Ludwig at 24804 Crescent View Road on Rice Lake. I would just like to, um, address the issue of people who aren't getting licensed and if there's a way to put language in the ordinance that, you know, there's some consequences to that, a fine. We have, um, an operation going next door to us. Um, my family's been there for 50 years. It's mine now. Wonderful neighborhood. And now every weekend is a family reunion. We're in a cul-de-sac. There's a minimum of 10 cars or more every weekend, 25 to 40 people. And it's all word of mouth because the owners are local. Um, it's, it's impacted our quality of life significantly. So, in general too, I would just like to reemphasize about trying to keep this conservative for now. Err on the side of the permanent residents and their quality of life because if it's next door to you, you really, you'll really get what a lot of these people are saying. And also, is there any chance to maybe redefine what short-term means? I'm not sure under 30 days really captures it. I think something in the information that was in the packet had a longer term, like six months with, which I think is a little too long, but, um, possibly 45 or more. Cause you can get three different 30-day rentals in a summer and each one of them will have two or three family reunions. So the whole summer's gonna be, um, large gatherings. So, if, especially though, the people who aren't getting licensed, I don't know if that's been raised an issue to you yet or if it's on your radar. I've contacted, you know, the county and they said if they're not, if they're not advertising on Airbnb or VRBO, you know, what can we do? Well, I can tell you all the neighbors could, um, corroborate that it's going on. So, if you would give that consideration, it would be appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. Um, I'm Heidi Stalberger, Wakefield Township Clerk. And our board placed a moratorium on vacation home rentals in February and ordered our planning commission to study the subject. And so, um, with our last meeting, I recapped and sent, uh, uh, email to Commissioner Mergon just stating that generally the, our planning commission agreed with the items that were laid out, um, that you considered this morning on the sheet of the, uh, level of regulation. And for the most part, the items that I outlined, um, that the planning commission wanted further clarification on have been clarified to this point. However, our planning commission stated that, um, you know, we should think about adding, um, an item regarding pets. So typically, uh, vacation home rentals will say that they allow pets or don't allow pets and what that means. But our planning commission went on to further discuss that if pets would be allowed, that guests must keep pets on-premise at all times and guests must clean up after their pets. And so those, that language, they would, um, request that, that that be added. And then there was also discussion, um, and it's something that I've been hearing over and over again, um, from many of the speakers, that, um, if there's a property that has a vacation home rental permit on it and then, um, someone's using it for personal use one week and then they're renting it out the next week. And, you know, this goes on, or maybe their family members are using it. Um, there's a difference in how that, how that property can be used based on who's staying there. And so the, the neighbors don't always know what the situation is. And so, as a clerk, I get those phone calls to say, you know, yeah, they have a vacation home rental and there were like 30 people there and cars parked all over the road. Well, if they're using it for personal use, that's okay. But the neighbors might not know that. And so, um, we had that discussion about adding some language, with regard to that. And we didn't really come up with any solutions, but I just wanted to say that, you know, personally, as a local township clerk, those are the types of calls that I'm getting and that is what I've been hearing a lot today. Thank you.
Thanks, Heidi.
Good morning. My name is Dennis Lowen, Mayberry Township. I live at 7924 County Road 44, just outside of Kimball. Uh, our board did put a moratorium on VRBOs. Uh, I feel, in speaking with the other board members, this, this is a very good start. And again, a very good start. It's been fascinating to listen to the pros and cons this morning. Some unique situations. I think Mr. DeRose, the first DeRose, i- is pretty unique. I, I would love to see him end up with his grandfather's original resort. But in contrast to that, I think you do need to put a lot of counsel into allowing so many of these things as residential, R1 especially. Uh, I would like to see, from my own perspective at least, to consider how many times you can rent these per season, per year. Uh, we have talked with an attorney that represents our township and looking at, if we're more restrictive than Stearns County, which we're probably going to be at this point in time, how are we gonna enforce that? That's always gonna be the main issue for us. So therefore, I'd like to pass the buck to the county. And how you regulate that. Our, what we're speaking of right now is going two rentals per month, not to exceed two weeks, because there are problems with the neighbors. There are people that just don't care about things. So how you guys find that middle ground, as I said before? Good luck. This is a good start. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, thanks so much for hosting this. My name is Jamie Jewels and I currently reside with my family at 16922 County Road 49 in Cold Spring. Um, first, let me just say I am in support of short-term rentals. My family was, I think, probably one of the last to receive an interim use permit, um, back in February. And we are in Wakefield Township. Um, we have not actually started renting that property yet. We're in the process of getting it fixed up and getting it ready to rent. But that property of ours is a cherished family cabin. And it's a property that we plan to use personally throughout the year as well. Um, and because of that, I think our approach would be very similar to Joe's, Sandy's, Robyn's, Lisa's, some of these other extremely, uh, responsible property owners who that are following the rules, aren't, they don't mind regulations and they want their property to be well taken care of. And they have good relationships with their neighbors and they wanna continue that. Um, I think what I've heard a lot today is the speculative problems that may come up. Marriott has been mentioned multiple times. I, I think a lot of these cases, they're not clear-cut. It's a very individual basis, um, by property and by property owner. If there's ever a time in the future where an interim use permit application comes across the desk for Marriott, perhaps the board and environmental services should have the ability to kind of deny that. But if it's the, the DeRose family, who's a well-established family in the community and has a proven track record of success in managing these properties, that's a different situation. So I think it's not a case-by-case situation. It's a not-clear-cut. And also, there's a precedence of revoking permits where, um, violations have occurred. So there's a lot of talk about what happens if this occurs? What happens if that occurs? Well, they lose their interim use permit. And that's that. Um, there shouldn't be a reason to penalize people that are being responsible property owners and following the rules and want to take care of their property as well as their relationships with their neighbors. Finally, I just mentioned this comment about the LLCs. Everybody's talked about, um, that's a great way to mitigate your exposure legally. Somewhat similar to the Marriott comment. You know, if it's a responsible person in the community that's owning these LLCs as individuals, why should they be restricted to have one or two or three? If it's Marriott who's coming in and, or a big institutional investor, that's a totally different situation. Um, I personally have my property in an LLC. We have, I have a short-term rental in Ames, Iowa, that's in an LLC. And again, different. We screen our guests very closely. We have families. We have small reunions there and we've had great feedback and we have good relationships with our neighbors. So that makes all the difference. Um, again, just appreciate your time and, um, your progressiveness on looking at this matter. I guess one other thing I just share is times are changing and the way people travel is changing. Um, I have a young family. We prefer to be in a short-term rental situation as opposed to a hotel. So these are not hotels. People making the comparison that they are, they're simply not. We prefer to be in a neighborhood, especially when we're traveling further afield. We would love to be in a neighborhood to get the flavor of what are people living like in that community? And what's their daily life like? And so, like, restricting it from a residential standpoint actually has negative unintended consequences too because some of those people prefer to be in the residential areas and living life like a local. So, again, thank you for your time. Appreciate your consideration and, um, the progressiveness of discussing this.
Thank you.
Morning. My name's Russ Miller. I live on, uh, Derrywood Road in Kimball. Uh, first and foremost, again, I appreciate what you've done as the board and environmental services in the planning commission as far as putting what I call this matrix together. And, uh, to the chairman's comments initially, uh, I support what's on this piece of paper as far as the matrix, by and large, other than two items, uh, one of which is the provisional aspect to the permitting, which kind of, uh, negates the public input. So I would like to see the IUP process still kept in place. And, uh, as far as the, uh, personal information being put out on the website, you know, I can understand that from my individual perspective. Okay, I, I don't want my phone number out there where somebody can just click on that and call it. Well, if it's a business, uh, you should be able to afford a business telephone and to be in contact in that 24/7 aspect. So I support that heavily as well. And just lastly, I, I encourage the, uh, the board to take some type of action on these recommendations. You know, initially, when I saw the package put out on the website for the planning commission, it's like, holy cow, you know, these, uh, individuals are gonna have to be getting together and discussing things or doing a lot of research in advance prior to the meeting to be coming up with, okay, line-by-line item, you know, how are we gonna approach this? And they came up with some great ideas, which were, again, uh, are highlighted in red and I, I support those, other than the provisional aspect. So please, again, there's four townships out there, you know, with moratoriums in place right now. And they're kind of, uh, waiting for you folks to, uh, lead the way on this. Uh, it's gonna help those, and I'm not opposed to VRBOs. There's a time and a place. And as regulated here, I think that's gonna be achievable. But the board's gotta take some type of action here. May not be today. Uh, again, it's a lot of information to pull in. Got a lot of comments, but, uh, don't kick this can too far down the road. Please. Thanks a lot.
Hopefully, nobody needs a bathroom break anytime soon.
This will be brief. I'm Jane Salzle, 42557 County Road 13 in Melrose. I'm here for our township, Melrose Township. We've just had our first, um, request for, uh, a vacation rental in our township. And we've never talked about it. So I'm kinda like, holy crap, there is a lot of crap, um, here to deal with. So, thank you. Um, townships are getting on board and realizing this is a thing. Maybe we're a little behind the eight ball, but thank you for doing this. And yes, something needs to be done. Having people be responsible. And I think it's really important that people are penalized for being not compliant. Like maybe see you later, you had your chance. None of this three-strike stuff, but give them an opportunity. But be, say, well, you know, it didn't work and move on. So that would be my only comment. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Hi.
Good morning.
I'm Heather Hoffman, and we own a cabin at 41053 Stock Lake Road. When John and myself bought our cabin, I never thought this is something that we'd have to face. But recently, with all the backlash that we've been presented with since becoming vacation rental homeowners, I feel it's important that I say something. It may not be pouring out facts and information, but it is coming from the heart. I'm sure this will be seen as naive, but considering the weight of the situation, getting the positive end of vacation rental homes out there is important to me, even if it's been heard or not heard a thousand times. This is the land of 10,000 lakes, a place where people come to experience the best part of life. Simply driving around a lake can put your mind at ease. It's about being with friends and family, having a dock to drink a cup of coffee on in the morning, bonfires, smores, the smell of the lake, or the sounds of a balloon. These are all things that people want to enjoy when they come to our places to stay. I'm sure most of you know this already, but our lakes are pretty magical. We want to share them with good people, people just like you and me and all the people in this room. I think I can say for a large majority of vacation rental homeowners, that this is more than just income. This is a place that we worked hard for and that we love. This is a place that we want to share with others so they can make the same memories. This is a place that has given me purpose, something that I love and take extreme pride in. It'd be easy to throw in the towel and sell and not deal with all this negativity. But when I hear from Grandma and Grandpa that they just spent an amazing week with their kids and their grandkids, it's hard to give it up. From what I'm seeing, is there are false claims being made and voices being raised to simply drive these vacation rentals out of neighborhoods for good. I do understand why neighbors of these vacation rentals can be angry. Some people are not doing their part in running a good operation, and it's an operation that is respectful. But we and many others are trying our hardest. We are abiding by the rules, doing everything we can to be legal and make it the best experience for everyone, neighbors and renters. If we are doing our jobs to our fullest capability, then there shouldn't be any out-of-the-ordinary disruptions to our neighbors. Lastly, I'm also here to ask that Stearns County consider no longer allowing townships to take over. In our case, and I'm sure many others, Stock Center is not that big of a town. And from what we can see, the playing field has not been fair. And it becomes too personal. We need people to look over us that have no connection to us and can see only the job that we are doing. Since we've started this whole process, Stearns County has done a wonderful job at making sure we are compliant. But they also have open ears and an open mind. They've been willing to work with us, but also have been fair to everyone. And we, as vacation rental homeowners, can do good. So just please let us prove that.
Thank you. Okay. Is there anyone else wishing to speak today? Trust me, I definitely appreciate everybody's comments, because it's, you know, it is a big concern. And it's, you know, something that's kind of risen to the top. And, you know, there's good and there's, you know, not-so-good. And there's people that try and do good, and others that, you know, just let it ride. So I don't know if there's anybody else that would like to speak. But if not, Angie, you don't have anything further, otherwise we can close the public hearing. Okay? With that, I'll close the public hearing. Does anybody need to take a break? Okay, we're going to take a five-minute break here before we continue.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I'd like to. All right, I'd like to call the meeting back to order. All right, Angie, where are we at?
Yes, so again, going back to Commissioner Persky's question, what are your options today? The options that we're suggesting you consider would be, take no action, leaving the current ordinance on the books. Number two would be to take action on some or all of the proposed changes. And number three would be to direct staff to come back with more information, research something that you heard today that you're interested in that's not part of the proposal.
Okay. There's one thing that I would heard, well, I guess it was mentioned a couple of times, was on the compliance rate. I don't know if that's something that is tracked somewhere, or if there's a reason why.
So Commissioner Nodch, Mr. Chair, and Joe DeRoz spoke a little bit about this. Some other counties have hired a firm to basically do an internet search. And that's where they're coming up. Hospitality Minnesota is coming up with a 2080 compliance rate, and I absolutely believe that. And as you all know, and I don't know if the public has really thought through all of this, but even if vacation home rentals were banned in Stearns County, we're still going to have enforcement issues. And so we're still going to have to have a mechanism. Do we have enough people to do that? Do we need to hire an outside firm? I don't think Shelley and I have those answers for you today. But that isn't something that's part of the ordinance. That's really an administration discussion.
All right. Commissioner Clark?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Berg, I actually, kind of along with that, the compliance rate would be like anybody who's doing anything in the area, not the compliance rate of the people who are permitted. Is that correct? And I think that's important for people to know, right? I think we've heard a lot of testimony today about what people are trying to do to follow the regulations. So a real challenge is all the people who might be doing something that isn't permitted. And then there's all the rest of the people who have their friends and family over that, as was pointed out, is hard to tell what is their friends and family, and how would somebody know? You actually had referred to me earlier in this. Because I've been interested in how do we better find out who's doing it? And then say, hey, you got to go through the permitting process, or here's something, you know, some consequence, like some fine. And I think there's other interest in that. A challenge might be, as we do some research on that, it sounds like the company that Prowing uses, which again, could be a really good thing, also just calls people who are just, they don't rent out. And then they get questions from people, and they say, so are you renting out? Are you renting out yet? Are you renting out yet? And a Stearns County resident that has a place up there said, we've had the county call and say, you've been reported as doing this, and they've never rented out. And so a challenge, again, is when we get to that part of it, which may be separate than this, is how do we both get good information, fine, or have some consequence, but also aren't annoying people who aren't renting out that, you know, with nuisance calls? So I'm interested too, in kind of how do we deal with some of that. But it sounds like permitted people is not where our non-compliance rate is.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. Commissioner Lenz, mayor?
I've asked for this a number of times in the past, frustrated by our lack of progress on this. But we, we, the county, we really can't afford enforcement. I mean, you know, what are we going to do? Go out there and take up residence and be there all the time? Is there a way that we can structure what we think needs to be done in a way that there's an incentive for people to comply? And we haven't, we're not used to that at all. It always comes back to, instead of the carrot, we use the stick. And God, that's frustrating. There's got to be a way that if we deem certain things to be a positive aspect of all these comments that have been made, how do we make it worth folks' while to comply with the direction we want things to go? That might be a Pollyanna idea, and you know, that just won't leave my head. But there has, long run, there's got to be a better way. End of sermon, you know, you go to church on Sunday for this stuff. But yeah, I wish there was a better way to handle this.
Commissioner Persky?
Lee, I'll tell you what, I think something actually you had mentioned at one of the previous meetings in the way we are regulating this, that might be somewhat of a carrot. And that is, go with the provisional first. Instead of granting them a five- or a 10-year lease or allowance on that, if it's three years, you know, if they've got continual violations over that time, they just don't get renewed. And so those folks that are complying and doing well, you know, therefore then have demonstrated that, you know, it's worthy maybe to continue. A couple of things I had just thought about as well while we're discussing this is, as far as compliance and what do we do about violations? You know, there should be some type of repercussions for those folks that are doing that. However, there could be some consequences that are not so good to those folks that are actually perhaps in future rentals. So let's say you get a bad egg, and they decide they're going to do fireworks display off the dock. Well, you can't pull that license, I think, and say, well, we're pulling your license because of these folks that were here and did fireworks display. Because what happens with the next, let's say, eight weeks of people that might be coming from out of the country and out of the state and are planning a vacation? All of a sudden, their vacation's taken away from them. So, you know, as far as responding to violations, we have to have some type, unfortunately, of a stick. But we can't be necessarily, you know, penalizing those people that have nothing to do with what took place. It's just a consideration, you know, we have to have, but there has to be some type of consequences. And one other thing I just had noticed going through this list, I don't know if we had anything on there about RVs or camping. Because I don't know if, you know, again, somebody has a vacation rental. Well, their son and cousins might have an RV, and, you know, here comes the RV in the backyard, and that maybe changes situations. So, yeah, that might be something that we need there as well. But by the same token, if I want to take the grandkids out and have a little camp out in the tent and make them think they're in the wilderness, I see that doing no harm, you know?
I think that's what makes it so complicated. Because, I mean, it happens all over the state, county, country, you know, where people do stop in, and they're traveling through, and they pull in maybe for the night. and they pull in maybe for the night. And I mean, do we really want to take stuff like that away? I mean, this is an area where you can try and regulate, but unless you're going to have somebody sitting on every street, I mean, and I don't think we want to be that way. I don't anyway.
No, I agree with you, Mr. Chair. This actually built off of what Lee, Commissioner Lenzmeyer, what you were bringing up. So it sounds like, not to say there aren't any issues with anybody who currently is permitted, and we have ways of dealing with some of that. Lee, I think you were saying, you know, what is that can be done? What's a carrot that maybe could get people to actually go do it the legal way and follow whatever those regulations are? And a lot of the challenges are with people who aren't. And that, and it goes back to even what you were just, the examples you were bringing up about who's doing what and when, and is it your kids or their friends or somebody else that's making noise versus somebody who's renting? And so I guess I'm wondering, Lee, if there's ideas about, is that where you were going? Is there ways, there are carrots for our staff to consider, maybe we don't talk a lot about today, to get people to engage in going through the right process, or once, if they are doing this in an appropriate way? I don't know, is that where you were going, Lee? I know you're thinking about your next point, though. I don't know if you can hear me, Lee?
Commissioner Lenzmeyer.
Lee, I was asking you a question. Were you thinking with carrots about try, could you use carrots to get people to actually go through and do the process?
That's a general idea.
I know it's a general one, I was wondering for this, though, are you, do you have any ideas? Because I think that could be interesting getting staff to come back with a couple of ideas.
No, I don't, I don't have a suggestion on what to do there. In fact, I'm going to bring up another problem. Through all of this commentary, is there, is it possible there was something left unsaid? Actually, there is. One of these, a couple of months ago, we were addressing. This property was accessed by a 110-year-old roadway. And hopelessly inadequate. If somebody had a medic, an emergency medical event and had to be accessed with that roadway, could an ambulance actually get in there? Could a fire truck actually get in there? Could have, you know, once it's all jammed up with, and parked full of vehicles, can a cop car actually get in there? And then if you got a 110-year-old access, I'm sure that, you know, there's parts of it that are overgrown, and you'd have hell to pay to go in there and start removing trees like. People will put up with that for power lines? They won't put up with that just for access? This, so we're, doesn't mean we duck away from the problem, but access is an issue. Also, I'm kind of surprised that we have, you know, with that limited access issue, we ought to get some input at least from our insurance folks. To what extent initially, what's the county's liability on this? If you approve something and you know this condition exists, but beyond that, how do the private insurers that insure these dwellings individually? Do they look at that? I don't know if it's got to be a situation where the insurance industry takes a hit on a number of these before they demand action. But there, as hard as it is to believe, there are some things that weren't brought up. It's amazing.
It's on the chart, please, Mr. Chair. They've got it on the chart.
You know, and maybe a little bit to that point, Lee, being on the fire and rescue. You'd be amazed if you get a call, people scatter, I mean, they, you talked about congestion with traffic vehicles and stuff. It's amazing, if something's going on, I'd say 90%, 99% by the time you get there, they've, I mean, they've cleared things out. And I mean, you might have that one or two where you got an issue, but I've never seen in 32 years where you couldn't, you know, get somewhere. And out in my district, there are some pretty country lanes, so.
Even the heart attack, I mean, I can see that reaction if there's a fire. But, you know, heart attack isn't, yeah, well, two of us have pacemakers, so surprising.
And Mr. Chair, you know, we brought this up before. I mean, I continue to think it's an important issue regardless of whether it's rental or not. If people are living on a road that's not accessible, then it probably should be, it should be looked at.
High visibility incidents. I can appreciate that might be the case. Well, it is the case if you said it.
Commissioner Mergan.
Yeah, and I'm just looking at this list. I, after hearing all the comments today, if I'd like to have a little more time to process. And I would like, you know, the meeting is over with the public hearing, so I'd like to have some time to process and maybe go through this list one, one line at a time. And set that time maybe at a future board meeting? I don't know where everybody else would fall on that.
Is that something that's possible, Angie?
Absolutely.
Commissioner Clark.
I was, I was actually wondering, it would obviously be open to the public if we would do it as a work meeting, a work meeting or a committee of the whole, so we actually have enough time set aside and not try to cram it into our regular board meeting. Staff tried hard to give us enough time today, but we are clearly way over the amount of time they thought it might take. So I'd like to have the time and then the ability to really take the time to.
The board meetings are public information and they're generally on videos, so I would prefer to have it at an actual board meeting.
I would, I'd like some extra time, and it may or may not be at a board meeting, that's all I'm requesting.
Mike, our logistics with something like that, a committee of the whole.
Mr. Chair, I mean, we, you know, we occasionally will meet and then, you know, sit around a table and call it a work session. Not very often, for the reason Commissioner Mergan says. But we can certainly do that if you think it's going to be another, you know, hour and a half, two-hour discussion.
I think it could be longer.
Rather than, as you know, we've done it once in a while, like maybe once in the last few years.
Yeah, we're way at, we're more than halfway through prime time. And seasonally, these properties are impacted, so we might as well take our time and see what we can come up with. Maybe we'll take our time and come up with a solution that's just as miserable as what we've got. But we can use our timing to our advantage.
Could we, as an option, you know, we usually know what's going to be on the board, you know, agenda? If it looks like we have a light one coming up, we could just, you know, put it on. We don't have to necessarily get it all done at one, but if we took part of it and then the next meeting, I mean.
And again, sitting around a table, getting a chance to really be thoughtful about it. I think sometimes we don't have a lot of time to process it, and a lot of counties actually do utilize those opportunities to learn as well as to make decisions.
Commissioner Persky.
No, I'm agreeing with what I'm hearing here, too. And maybe also staff, maybe some of the things they heard could be highlighting those. And if we now go home and think, oh, we should have talked about this, we should have talked about this, we can provide that information back to staff so it gets on the agenda for discussion, so.
Yeah, because I think there was one thing that I noticed nobody mentioned, I think was the screening part. That has come up a few times, too.
Right.
So, so yeah, I guess, whatever the board.
Mr. Chair, I think based on a lot of what we've heard from a number of people is this wouldn't rise to the level of going into our ordinance, but what are the kinds of things to help people be successful upfront? You know, the kinds of checklists? What are the information that we can be giving out, which includes screening? What are those, some of those best practices? Because if, you know, again, it seems it's so hard to regulate human behavior, and that a lot of times we make decisions based on the 10% potential or 10% backed actors versus the 90% that are trying to do the right thing. So what can we do? And then going after the 10%. So what is it, what are some of those things? Again, it might not make it in here, but I'd be really interested in what are some of those kinds of better practices that we can do to help neighbors, to help owners maybe have some more successful experiences?
And maybe it would fall back to, I don't know how many years ago it was, where you had the site sounds of agriculture, you know, where that was a, you know, pamphlet or whatever that was handed out. You know, maybe that's something that would help this situation. Somebody's going to apply for this and here on their website and go to here and, you know, these are some criteria, high points. And if you don't think you can meet these, maybe you don't want to do it.
Right, absolutely.
We need time to look for carrots.
Okay, well.
I agree.
So it sounds like consensus, do we need a motion to maybe?
Yeah, what do you want?
Continue this at some point, or what?
I would make, I would consider that you table the discussion till the future meeting, and we can work with administration on when that might be.
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Prefer that to be in like a work session then, is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, yes.
I personally would prefer it at a board meeting because we do have, generally it's televised and everything. That's just my personal preference.
And I just think we need some more time. It could even be during, it could be on a Tuesday, and we could spend more time and people can come, and then we could come back. I doubt we'll be all the way finished, we won't make the decision until.
If it takes two board meetings.
So that's why I'm asking, because there are times where we have complicated issues that we do not have enough time in our board meetings for.
Okay, so the motion at this point is to table?
Table it and come back at a different, and have administration figure out whether we'd be back at a board meeting or we come in earlier or we do something else. But I just want to make sure we have enough time as it is noon right now.
Okay.
And, Mr. Chair, and of course, anything that's going to be passed would be scrutinized and would happen at a public meeting.
Well, it will be a public meeting. I don't believe in darkness. I do not believe in darkness.
Either way we do it, it would be televised live.
I don't, I don't know that it would be because we'd be sitting over there.
Because that's what I.
There'd be a way that people can participate.
I think the public deserves that.
Again, I'm just putting out where I'm at.
Mr. Chair, I would suggest that the board makes it clear what they want to do.
Terrell, you have a motion on the floor, or do you want to?
I would like the administration to figure out a way and time that we can do this that will give us sufficient time.
Are you okay if it's a board meeting?
Potentially, yeah, if we've got that opportunity. I don't know that we've got something.
That's probably what Mike's probably looking for is if.
Yeah.
Again, if there is time, if there's time to do it at a board meeting, great, or over a couple of meetings. Otherwise, some time and then we follow up.
Maybe what we do is we have that as a last item on a couple of board meetings to just funnel through it and keep working on it. That, like you said, we don't want to kick the can too far down the road either.
No, I think it's really important that we get, I think, you know what, I really, I want to thank the planning commission and all the people who have been speaking up because there's a lot of good things here. I think there are some items, including honestly, the LLC that could be problematic if we just say you can't have an LLC for the reasons that were said. And I think for all, for many of us, we're concerned about what if the Mariots of the world would come in and take over our neighborhoods? And, you know, I often think about Commissioner Lenzmeyer, when you talk about how do we make things better? So what's our next step to make things better? And then I'd say we're going to come back and look at this again. So I, I hope that we do take some action soon, that we have enough time to both process and, and give people some opportunities to know where things stand so they can get moving.
Okay, so you have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a second, Commissioner Lenzmeyer, further discussion.
Yeah, I'm optimistic, but yeah, this will be, this will be a job.
Commissioner Mergan, you look like you have a question maybe?
I'm aiming for a board meeting.
Okay. All right, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, seconded by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Mr. Chair, just for the benefit of the public, if you have signed up for the vacation home rental email subscription, I will update that, you'll, you'll get an email update through the meetings on demand. If you are not subscribed, let me know and we'll get you subscribed, but that's how you will find out when the meeting or meetings will be.
That's for the general public, too, or?
It is, yes, but specific to vacation home rentals, I have a separate group that we send notice to.
All right. Well, again, thanks, everyone, for spending time with us today and giving us a lot to chew on, I guess, so. And appreciate everybody's, you know, being cordial and, you know, working through this. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody need another break?
Maybe in about, we're all out of.
I don't know, do they have any more back there?
No.
Yeah, I noticed they must be running, huh? And Mike?
Is it coming there too or not?
I think so.
I'm going to bring a sweater.
Mike, can they maybe turn the air off in here or turn it down?
It's very chilly.
I don't feel it over here, but I think you can hear it, you can hear the blinds.
I figured they needed it because of how many people were in the room, so that makes sense.
There's an inch of ice on my coffee.
I know.
Okay. All right. As, as we clear the room, next up is going to be the Stearns County Housing and Redevelopment Authority. So as soon as we get a couple of people to pop back in, and we'll be ready to go. Morning, Neil, or good afternoon, Neil.
Good afternoon. I'm watching my parking meter on my phone. Good afternoon, Neil Fortier, Executive Director with the Housing and Redevelopment Authority for Stearns County. Here today, asking for a 2.6% increase in our levy over last year that would amount to approximately $10,700 over last year's levy request. And I'll make it real brief. You know, the last two years with COVID certainly presented our agency with many challenges. And now even worse than COVID is inflation. And what we are seeing with rents, we're seeing substantial increases in rents, 10% to 15% is not unheard of. And we have landlords dropping out of the program daily because they know that they can get much higher rents than what the fair market rents are that we post for Stearns County. So the amount of applicants, the amount of calls that we're receiving, the amount of people coming in our front door asking for assistance is more now than even during the pandemic. And so it's taken a lot more staff time. We are having basically two people versus one full-time person manage this program during this overwhelming time. And just in the last fiscal year, which our fiscal year ended in June, the agency itself subsidized the Section 8 program to the tune of $72,000. So needless to say, the levy doesn't cover all of our costs. We recognize that year after year after year, we've subsidized this program. It's been 50 years that we've been in business this year, and, you know, we'll continue on for another 50 years. So with that, I'm asking for approval of 2.6% in our levy, and I'm certainly available for any questions.
Any comments from Commissioners? Commissioner Persky.
How many folks do you think are actually in need of a request that we're not meeting?
I was talking to someone in the audience about that earlier this morning. So right now, we service 271 households, 251 with that Section 8 project-based voucher. We have 200 plus on our waiting list, which will be about a two-year wait for these individuals. So, you know, if HUD were to open up the floodgates and, and offer us additional vouchers, I would ask for an additional 400, but then we'd have to double our staff in order to, to satisfy those needs. It's really hard to put a number on because we're limited by what HUD provides us. But I know that, you know, if we were to receive another. I know that, you know, if we were to receive another 400 vouchers, that we could issue those 400 vouchers.
And of course, there's those out there that are in need but just aren't even asking.
Correct.
Commissioner Mergen?
I sit on the HRA board and Neil does an excellent job. He works hard and everything. But, but I'm going to have to vote against this. This is the every year increase thing coming up, you know. The private sector people here are really hurting, you know, COVID. And then, like you mentioned, inflation. And, and the solution can't be then to raise their taxes to all these private people that are hurting. And they are hurting. I, I see it. I, I have people that do talk to me about it. I get out in the rural areas.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Mergen, FMA.
Yes.
Your constituents are the individuals that are coming to us asking for assistance. We are looking at a $17 a year cost to our taxpayers to assist these individuals within Stearns County. It's not a matter of coming to ask for an increase each year because it's minimal. I'm talking 2.6%. But the impact that we have on individuals in Stearns County is substantially more than the impact that we are having on taxpayers.
Okay, $17 a year here. Then there's another one. Then there's somebody else and then the county levy. And this is, it add, just adds to the death by a thousand cuts to the taxpayer. Everybody's, everybody that comes up says, well, it's only this much. I don't like the word only in front of money. But, because that means different things to different people. And, and there are a lot of people that aren't coming in but are still hurting. And every bit of this, I mean, that's just where I, I feel I have to vote no. And it's nothing against you.
Good thing you're sitting down, Jeff. I'll support that too. I don't, I, I totally appreciate there's a need. I don't think counties are the answer when all of these properties that we're involved in are in cities. And why are they in cities? Because we get water and sewer. I mean, it's pretty, pretty basic. And, you know, I, I, believe it or not, I wasn't here when, when, when the HRA aspect of this got started here. But punchline is, I, I don't think that here is, lies the answer. See, it's here. And I've done, I've made my case relative to my attitude. This is of a dubious nature, but we got it. And I've been unable to do anything about it.
So maybe just a question I'd have. So if, you know, if that's the case, which obviously is because most of these are apartment complexes. So if you take that approach like the St. Cloud HRA, so then they would go to the local municipality and ask for the same 2.6%, which then would still get levied on a taxpayer somewhere either in the community, you know, or as now, the county as a whole. Correct?
Correct. And I've had the conversations. I have a great relationship with Louise and, and St. Cloud HRA. They do not have the capacity to take on our role. They don't want to take on our role. And HUD's made it very clear that this is who we want to administer the program. We do not want cities to administer the program. We want public housing agencies because they are best at managing our resources.
That's true. Public housing agencies can't work with cities, correct?
No, that's not a correct statement.
Yeah, that's true. Yeah, that's, you're exactly right.
What do you mean it can't work with cities?
What? Well, I'm trying to, that's a trigger mechanism.
Okay. Any other comments or motion or?
Okay, Mr. Chair, I'll, I'll just make a couple of comments. Yeah, I'm, I'm not very pleased, obviously, with the situation that we're in. But that's the truth about the economic times we're living in. And also, you know, there are good landlords and maybe not so good landlords and people that are interested in making sure people have a roof over their heads and some people that are just interested in making sure that their dollars going into an account. But nevertheless, this does not support just free housing. That's not what we're talking about, correct? We're talking about support and assistance, correct?
Correct.
Right. And these folks too, as far as where they may be in their particular situation are in this need. And again, we've got as many people out there that have a need that aren't getting it. So I, I'm not necessarily one to open up the wallet and say, just take what you need. But by all means, I'll make the motion to move forward on this.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Persky.
Mr. Chair, I'll make the second.
Okay, second by Commissioner Clark. Comment?
Yeah, I, these are challenging times. And, you know, the, having stable, affordable housing in our communities makes a big difference. Secondarily, Mr. Chair, you already brought up one of my points, which was how the, the resources, where the money would flow to anyways. I mean, it would be the 2.6 somewhere. I appreciate your attempting to keep it down. And I do want to reinforce, this is the Stearns County HRA and the levy will go countywide, including for people who live in places who would not be eligible to get housing. So this is born, it will assist counties outside of the city of St., people of residence outside of the city of St. Cloud, but it will also be paid for by residents of St. Cloud. And that's because we do try to figure out how we can strengthen the region. And this is one of the ways to do that.
You know, and just a comment from last week, you know, when some of us attended the National Association of the Counties Conference in Denver, the, our, we had gotten, or some of us had gotten an Uber and the, the gal driving the car mentioned she was a single mother. And she, her rent went up $300 a month. So she worked a full-time job and then she Ubered 20 hours a week just to stay in their apartment. I mean, that, yeah, it's unfortunate. I mean, some of us are lucky enough to be able to afford what we have and stay where we are. But unfortunately, there's a number of people out there who are not in that position. And yeah, it's, none of us like to see our taxpayers have to pay more. But, you know, how it's, I don't know.
Well, I can't stand the suspense. I call a question.
Okay. All those in favor of the request from the Stearns County HRA signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Roll call.
Nay. Nay.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Neil. All right. Next up, we have public works. Good afternoon, Jody.
Good afternoon. Thank you for the reminder that it's not morning.
Well, Jody, according to the schedule, it's 10:45.
For the public, Jody type county engineer, my items begin on page 325 in your board packets. As you likely recall, at the July 19th board meeting, a public hearing was held to consider extension, excuse me, of the quarter percent local option sales tax for transportation. As a reminder, the current quarter percent sales tax sunsets or expires on December 31st of this year, and we have been collecting it since January 1st of 2018. In your board packets, there is a proposed road program along with a resolution that starts on page 333. And attached to that resolution is a list of the projects that would be funded with the sales tax. This is just a matter, it's not that these projects are the most important. It's just a matter of balancing our state aid funds, the county levy funds that are used for construction, wheelage tax, and the sales tax. At the, after the public hearing, Commissioner Mergen had requested some information related to portion of, portions of the levy that go to different departments. And the auditor's office did spend some time preparing that and they had emailed it out. And I know both Sarah and Randy are present. If you wanted that to be gone through or if you had any questions on that before we continue to the discussion on the sales tax.
Commissioner Mergen?
Yeah, there's, there's one sheet that came out. It says that it was beginning collected in 2019. That's incorrect, right? It's a, the sheet looks like this. It's got the blue and the green and, and it goes to the blue.
The spending started in 19, the spending started in 2019.
Okay, that's what that means.
We did have very minimal expenditure in 2018. It was just a portion of a bridge project because we needed that time to ramp up. We did start collecting it and we had very minimal spending in 2018 and the bulk was spent in the last four years.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, but technically it was 2018 where it started.
Correct.
Anybody else have any comments on what?
Yeah, the, the weird reality of highway funding is it isn't a situation that is strictly driven by need. Sometimes the decisions we make are driven by the availability of certain funds. Well, sooner or later, you know, we need, you know, spending for maintenance, spending for improvements, uh, uh, needs to be done. But the reality is, is certain roadways have, depend on different sources of, of revenue. And sometimes we have to make our decisions on where the money's coming from. So if this doesn't necessarily line up strictly by need, that's why.
Commissioner Mergen?
Yeah, just going through the part that Randy put together, there's one statement in there, and this is exactly what I, what I was afraid of when we first passed this. It says, "Those with non-levy funding sources are seeing their portion of the levy holding steady or decreasing." And, and that was, that's where the highway department now, portion of the levy is, 2017 was 9.9% and now it's dropped down to 8.8%. And I see this as, it is, using this levy is used to prop up other departments' funding, is what it's come down.
It's hot.
Commissioner Mergen.
I think the highway department is one of the most important departments in, in the county.
Well, it's the most visible.
And most important, where I get a lot of calls on roads.
Yes, I was curious, Commissioner Mergen, about that. On the second, on the second graph that I put together, there is a kind of a gap to show you the non-levy revenues and the expenses so that you can see that indeed the expenses that are being spent have gone up in the same proportion as their non-levy revenues have gone up. So there's kind of that similar, similar levy amount. The levy has been held fairly steady at that 7.6 million. It's been pretty steady in that regard. But the spending and the other revenues have continued to increase, which I believe was, the intent was to do more.
It was, the intent was to use this quarter percent sales tax above and above, above and beyond the levy, which in almost all other departments, the levy amount did increase. But it hasn't in the highway department. So it should be even more. It should, there should be a bigger gap, is my contention.
But it has increased though, over the years, at least on the second page. If you look at the top chart here under highway and streets, it was 2013, it was 7 million and 2022, 7.6.
Okay.
And there's certainly some other departments that would have gotten additional revenues since then as well. So we, I mean, if you wanted to look, and I wasn't here when you voted on it last time.
Yeah, but it, it hasn't kept pace with, at all with the, with the levy percent. The levy, percentage of the levy going to highways has dropped. And I think it's directly because of we put on this tax and we put on the, the wheelage tax also. And now the levy. So, and that, that's being used to drop the levy portion of the highway department.
Well, and that's based on the total level though. So if other departments go up, the highways, it stays close, it's going to go down.
Exactly.
That's a hard thing for me to explain in a memo or in a graph. If you have something such as the sheriff's department that is over 90% levied, every salary increase, every squad card increase, every, you know, increase in supplies is entirely levy funded. Whereas when you have something like human services or highway, their revenue proportionately goes up to help eat that increase, whether it be personnel or supplies. And so of course, your percentage of the total then goes down because you have other revenues to offset that. So it's kind of a complex math equation there. But there is, there is a big factor with that.
Mr. Chair, one other thing I wanted to mention, and I briefly touched on it at the last board meeting as well, is this outside revenue, I, I know it still comes from Stearns County, but it also is contrib-, people from outside of the county contribute to it. And then that helps us absorb some of those personnel cost increases. So they don't all have to be absorbed by the levy. We are able to use the sales tax to fund engineering costs and equipment costs that are directly related to those sales tax projects. So it has helped us to minimize some of our levy increase requests that we've had since it's been implemented.
I just think, you know, law enforcement and the highway department and me are the most, two most important ones in, in the county here. And I'm going to vote for this. But I, I just think the highway department's getting short-changed on the levy.
Okay. Any other comments? Otherwise, Jody, if you want to continue with the sales tax?
So, thank you. I'm obviously biased towards the highway department. So I'm going to keep my mouth shut.
I might be slightly also.
So today, the board has the option of doing nothing, which sunsets that quarter percent sales tax, or they can vote to extend the sales tax. Staff recommends no more than five years. As I previously stated, there is a resolution that would have to be adopted. And that is on page 333 in your agenda packets. As just a reminder, the funding, this additional funding, we believe will fund just over 67 miles of road improvements and one bridge replacement in the event, that full costs in the event the state does not allocate additional bridge bonding dollars for local bridges. Now, in the event, you know, two years down the road, we realize project costs have significantly increased. And so this project list can't be covered. We can determine at that point, do we just modify that project list? Much like revenues in the first year of the collections in 2018 were higher than we expected, we modified and added projects to that list through the public hearing process, in which case, I mean, we can discuss that and I can give an update when we're about a year and a half into collections and seeing what construction costs are doing. So there may be, right now, we have this project list that's an attachment to the resolution. But if that has to be modified because revenues are not keeping up with what construction cost inflation is, we would do so during a public hearing and I'd be able to give that update to the board at that time.
Okay. What are the wishes of the board?
I will move approval of the, the extension of the quarter cent local option transportation sales tax.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Clark. Do we have a second?
I'll start it.
We have a second from Commissioner Mergen. Further discussion?
Real quickly, Mr. Chair. Jody, so then we'll have the flexibility also depending upon where state and federal funding might be coming to make those adjustments so that we don't fall short. I mean, the dollars we collected will get spent on the projects. But do it, do we have enough projects to make sure that we're going to be able to spend all those dollars?
Yes.
Okay. That's what, that's what I want to make sure.
I'm more concerned about the opposite happening. Generally, we almost slightly overprogram to plan for federal money coming in, additional state aid revenues that come from our gas tax and motor vehicle sales tax, et cetera. So we almost slightly overprogram and that causes us sometimes to have to push a project back.
Okay. Because my understanding, you can't use dollars on a project that wasn't identified.
Correct. If we were modifying that project list, we would have to. If we were modifying that project list, we would have to have a public hearing to modify.
Okay.
You don't understand, thanks to inflation, dollars won't go as far.
Okay, any, any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor of the motion to extend the sales tax for another five years at a quarter percent? Say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you. For my next item, it starts on page 336 in your agenda packets. I am now asking the board to officially approve the five-year road program. We try to do this every year before the budget is submitted, but given the discussion on the sales tax, I held off on this. There is one correction that I have noted, especially since hearing that we have a project on both senators' congressionally-directed spending or community priority funding. I can't remember which is the Senate version, I'm really sorry. I, we can't call them earmarks anymore, but we do have a project that has made both senators' lists. And so if you look at page 343 on your agenda packets, that is where the quarter percent sales tax program starts. In 2023, I would like to add the project, County Road 120 between Highway 15 and County Road 1. That will be a full-depth resurfacing and a roundabout reconfiguration. And that would be the one project that would get added in here. And it will be contingent on receiving federal funding and that way it would be in the official published road program.
And that road is where?
It is near the Sam's Club and Walmart, right on the border of St. Cloud and Sartell.
So Highway 15 to County Road 1, right by the river, with the roundabouts in it?
With the, yep, and the one roundabout at County Road 1 would be reconfigured for a roundabout. That location has an unusually high crash rate. And it may be the configuration of it with the free right turn. It's generally not good for pedestrians with that configuration as well. You have a lot of last-minute lane shifts when people realize they're in a right-turn lane only. So we're gonna do some, we proposed to do some reconfiguration. It was actually surprising to me what the crash rate at that area is, so. And that would, again, would be contingent on receiving those federal funds.
Okay, Commissioner Clark?
Mr. Chair, I'd hate to say it, but I guess I'm not surprised. I actually avoid that road because that particular roundabout is a bit dangerous and stick on Highway 15 at all costs. So I think we may see some more inter-community travel if that gets fixed. So glad our senators are working to help us with that.
So at this point, you'd be looking for approval of the five-year road plan? Okay, do we have a motion to that effect?
I'll move to approve it.
Thank you, Commissioner Mergen, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second from Commissioner Clark, any further discussion? Any further discussion, seeing none, all those in favor saying aye, but saying aye? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
I have no miscellaneous unless anyone has anything for me. And I also don't want to be the reason I'm attending your board meeting.
Jody, you gonna be around after the meeting, yeah?
Yeah, I will sit, stick around.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thanks, Jody. The last item, I believe, is Auditor Treasurer, Randy?
Yeah, so we have consideration of setting the public hearing for fee changes. We look at fees every year and Sarah has a few comments she'd like to make.
Yes, good afternoon, Chair and members of the board. Sarah Uch, Finance Director in the Auditor Treasurer's Office. So we are here today asking for a public hearing to be set about some proposed changes in the public fee schedule with the effective date of January 1st, 2023. As Randy mentioned, as you will recall, each year, the Auditor Treasurer's Office picks one quarter of the public fees charged to do a cost comparison on, talk about the cost of the service and then decide, along with the department head, where we think those fees should fall. And so we have reviewed the environmental services this year and that have a substantial list of changes that I believe is on your packet, page 360. That listing of proposed changes will be on the county's website with a publication in the newspaper notifying of the public hearing and taking people to the website. At that same time, we allow other departments, if they have a fee change in mind, to also gain efficiency of just having one public hearing. And we had Property Services, the Auditor Treasurer and the Sheriff's Office had a few, couple minor fee changes to request as well. So with that, the board was provided all of the information that's, that we went through and I can answer questions on that now, or you will get that same information again at the public hearing. And at that time, we will walk through all the fee changes for the public and the board. So I'm available for any questions.
Okay, any questions, otherwise we need motions at the public hearing? Mr. Lenzmeyer, was that a motion?
Okay.
I'll second that, Mr. Lenzmeyer.
Thank you, Mr. Persky, for the second. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor saying aye? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Okay. We are up to items by commissioners. Commissioner Clark, would you care to start this afternoon?
I was gonna say, my brain is still trying to unpack, so. Really want to thank all of our residents who participated today. Mr. Chair, you brought up the NACO conference. As all of you know, I was able to attend, I was able to participate in the prenatal to three Leadership Academy at the front end. There's a bunch of good things that our county is already doing and some ideas to be talking to staff about babies, some additional ways that we're enhancing, including some engagement we're already doing. And then I have been reappointed as the Telecommunications and Technology Chair. One of the things that I know, talking with Dr. Williams, that's helpful even for our internet providers, is some better opportunities to learn about how to apply for the federal funding. And that is something that our committee staff is working on along with the FCC and NTIA to try to make some opportunities available. So hopefully we'll get that to further leverage our dollars that we're committing. So those are a couple of things, want to remind people. I know we started the day out with some public comments on voting. Want to remind people to get out and be voting. It's very important that we all do that in spite of the fact that it's our most gorgeous time of year to get out. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Persky?
Yes, and I'm glad you mentioned that about voting, Commissioner Clark. And I want to make sure we're getting good information. I don't know if any of you have seen, there was a journal called The Hill. They just recently put out that they had had a group of predominantly conservative analysis and researchers looking at the last election. And they came out with a 72-page report and they said there was absolutely no evidence of widespread fraud in the 2020 election. And so I want to make sure we're getting good information. They reviewed the 64 cases that the previous administration had brought up and that they said that there was absolutely no evidence to support there was fraud in those. Likewise, you know, we had had the Arizona recount, which took months. And that too, you know, going through each of those ballots produced zero fraud. In fact, the opposing or questioning person that was looking for the recount actually ended up with fewer votes instead of more votes. And then while at the NACO meeting, I had asked about voter fraud to our Homeland Security people. We had a secretary from Homeland Security there. And they said, "One of the strengths we have about foreign nationals perpetrating and getting into our elections is that we bring it down to grassroots." So that when we actually do our precincts and do them in the church basement and do them at the elementary school and do them at the city hall, it's very difficult for them to infiltrate that because it's neighbors that we all know taking care of those elections and it's difficult for them to undermine that. So what they were concerned about though was misinformation and about the spreading of misinformation that tries to undermine our democracy and bring people against people and undermining the election process that we do have, so. Just some things we need to consider in big picture.
Okay, Commissioner Lenzmeyer?
So, let's take a deep dive. I mean, there are people that don't buy that. And if we lose confidence, total confidence, in the election process, I think we're all in deep dudus, so let's take a look, see if we can learn anything. Maybe we'd wind up with an improved process. Going back to your previous role, Steve, did you know that Robin Doge was gonna hang up his tool belt?
Yes. Yeah, I found out a couple of weeks ago.
That's okay, no prior indication?
No.
Okay.
No part to that, they was thinking he would stick around for a few more years, but.
Yeah, I mean.
Definitely a good leader, but he'll be, he'll be missed.
See, you go off the board and the rails just disappear.
I don't think it was me.
Jeff, what was that date that was cited, right at the beginning of the meeting, during open forum? Significant date that we were talking about at the time and I missed it.
I can't remember.
You don't remember, okay.
I remember, I remember what we were talking about.
All righty, well, you know, that's fine. And beyond that, I'm hoping to catch up with Randy before we move on. I do want an explanation on what's this thing about voting twice? You gotta go here to vote, do this, you gotta go there to vote that.
So the Secretary of State after redistricting sends out PVC, these cards that tells you if where you live, your district has changed, and they have to send that out. So for mail ballot precincts, they don't have a polling place. Where the polling place for mail ballot precincts is the county auditor's office. But for their local elections, it's still, like the township, it's still their town hall. So for them, it's a little bit confusing and we sent out a press release about that.
Yeah, and our efforts to make things better, we made it worse, okay.
Well, I'll just remind you that mail ballot precincts decided to do mail balloting. It's not a county decision and, and generally the satisfaction rate and the turnout is very high in mail ballot precincts, so.
Yeah, I think, I had gotten a postcard, but I think part of, in relation to that too, was the location had changed with COVID. They had moved to different, you know, from the church to the park office. So they had referenced that again in the postcard too. Commissioner Mergen?
Yeah, I have one thing, I wanted to get Mike's update on what I asked last board meeting, to research into a political party getting involved in our nonpartisan elections. And I was wondering where you were at with that.
Commissioner Mergen, I did do a little bit of search on that and it indeed did originate from the, from a party, Senate District Party, I guess, how I would put it. I'm trying to remember, but I haven't, there wasn't a name to contact and I haven't had a discussion with them yet, but that was gonna be my next step. It definitely came from the Democratic Party, the appell.
Well, it doesn't matter which party, in no manner, shape or form should a political party be at all involved in these nonpartisan elections. And I don't intend to let this go away until we've gotten to the bottom of it. Because this came, one person had to originally mention this and I'm not gonna let this die until, until we get some answers.
Well, I did go to the, to the, I'm not prepared to talk about this very well, but there's the bylaws of the current, of the party and it actually, there's a process that they have outlined to support even local candidates. And so they're making that offer is what I could tell. I don't know that there's anything illegal about that, but certainly it is of concern.
But at the very least, at the end, I'm gonna request that this, this Senate District person that I found the thing from, that the chair of that party appear before this board and deliver a sincere apology and include the exact origin of this problem. And I'm probably gonna have to go to other avenues to pursue this and get some answers. Probably intending to start that this Friday. That's all I have.
Yeah. Okay. I just found it was interesting, the Agriculture Utilization Research Institute, which is RE, I had gotten an email from them, they're actually having an event at the Milk and Honey Ciders in St. Joe. And it's called From Setback to Success: How Failure Can Create Opportunity. So it's kind of, I think it'd be interesting, it goes from two to four on August 23rd at Milk and Honey in St. Joe. So I just thought I'd bring that up because they've been a discussion item here in the past and kind of might be an interesting event if anybody wants to attend. The other thing I was gonna mention, I attended a county fair a couple of times this past week in Sock Center and I think they probably have one of their best county fairs probably in a decade. And I think the weather was nice and people just wanted to get out. But I think for their sake, it was a huge success. I did on Sunday hand out the Farm Family of the Year, which was strawberries Glornmore out of Albany, which is a vegetable, they obviously have strawberries, they have three children and they're, they, one of them is Haley's Honey. She makes honey from the bees they have that pollinate their crops. And then Callie, she has Callie's kernels, which is a sweet corn. And then their, their son Bryce has Bryce's Pumpkins, which if you get off the freeway in Albany in the fall, usually buy a central soda, he's got a trailer there just full of different-sized pumpkins. So I'd like to congratulate the Ferrex family, you know, on receiving that award. And then one other thing in regards to the NACO conference. So I attended a Roberts Rules of Order breakout, which was the largest group they've ever had. I mean, the room was overflowing, part of it was because there was a lot of new county people as well. But they kind of triggered a couple of things. Do we have our own, like, set of, does Stearns County have an unwritten rule of how we conduct versus, you know, a lot of them use a generic, you know, they don't use, some have parliamentarians that attend each meetings, but some of them, it's all hybrid, you know, it's kind of what the norm is for the county. So I was just curious if we had anything.
Larry Haas said it best, Stearns County operates under Robitski's.
Yeah.
And I think there's more than one county that operates that way, or even a local.
I get more wound up about that, but come on, folks, this works.
Well, and it was interesting because it was the basics. You didn't, I mean, there's, you can dive deep in it, but they had a professional there that goes around to government agencies and just teaches the basics, you know, foreign order, just amendments. So it was enlightening for myself to go.
Steve, I think you're right and we dealt with this in Sartell because we all pretty much more or less follow Roberts Rules, but there's no statute that says you have to follow Roberts Rules. Basically, you have to have a vote and they have to have a second and it has to be a majority vote to win. So basically, that's it.
Yeah, and one of the interesting things was the agenda, I think Commissioner Persky, when you became Chair, you wanted approval of the agenda, was it? And that was one of the first things they mentioned is that should be, you know, automatic.
Yeah.
Commissioner Clark?
Yeah, and Mr. Chair, I think one of the good things about Roberts Rules, well, two things. One is it gives predictability about what to expect for all members and for the public. So if you have some basic ideas about that. And two, it also preserves the record in a better way, which is, much as I love calling all of you by your first names, somebody 10 years from now, they still need to know who the, if they're trying to figure out who it is they go back to, they need to know the last name. So there are some helpful things in addition to, I will call it the Haas, maybe the Haas-Lenzmeyer way of doing it. But I think overall, we do a pretty good job. But yeah, AMC sometimes does trainings too and it might behoove all of us to always get a little, little brush up.
All right, well, that's all I had. There's nothing else from administration. We can call this meeting adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, that was easy.
Hey Jeff, you got a second?
Yeah, that was real easy. Yeah, that was real easy.